Good evening, everyone. This is the January 24th, 2023. The agenda has two, three regular meeting of the Flemington Borough Planning Board. The meeting is called pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, with adequate and electronic notice of this meeting has been provided by way of publication in the Hunter County Democrat honor about January 19th, 2023, and in the Courier-News newspaper honor about January 18th, 2023. In addition, notice of the meeting was posted on the door of the Borough Flemington Municipal Building, located here in 38 Park Avenue, and any handicapped accessible entrances there, too. Posted on the municipal website, provided to the municipal clerk, and distributed to all persons if any requesting copies of the same. This meeting is being recorded with both audio and video and may be rebroadcast. The meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision in deformed appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. These rise reflects liberty, right?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, in whose liberty and justice for all.
Let me please some more roll.
Mayor Carroll, here. Mr. Campion?
Here.
Mr. Dasha?
Here.
Mr. Levitt?
Here.
Here.
Ms. Kiffin?
Yes.
Ms. Weitzman?
Here.
Mr. Hill is excused. Mr. Semino?
Here.
Mr. Show?
Here.
You. And Mr. Waintrout. And Ms. Apple?
Here.
Ms. Kazinski?
Here.
Mr. Clerico?
Yeah.
Ms. McNannis?
Here.
And Mr. Chapp?
Here.
All rights. Good evening, all. First item on the agenda this evening is always a time for public comments, but items not currently in front of the board. If any members of the public, the person which should speak, please raise your hand. If you're online on Zoom, you can click Raise Hand. Seeing none, I will move on to item two, mayor comments.
Good evening. Thank you. I just can make sure that everybody knows that last night we tabled the campus ordinance, tried to introduce one and sent it here, and there's substantial change that needs to be made. So that's coming off the agenda tonight. So we are planning on introducing, reintroducing the one and introducing the other one at our regular meeting on February 13th, so it'll be back here for Valentine's Day. And for consideration by the favor.
So in light of that, can I, before we go any further, the agenda that does have this item on there as item seven, should we amend the agenda now, or should we just table it then?
It's up to you. You can wait till we get there.
Let's wait till we get there, and then we'll just table to the next because we anticipated coming in. Okay. Council comments.
Thank you. First of all, I wanted to tell all you planning nerds that there is a Flemington Borough Garden Planning Meeting this Sunday coming up, 3:00 PM, the 29th. It is, if you're interested at all, I think it's a, it'll be a good event. And that is at Factory Fuel, by the way. So if you really just want to go get some coffee and talk to Jess, he's a world of information, so go get some coffee and warm up. And the other thing that I wanted to mention was that I had that better? The other thing I wanted to mention was that I attended the Meet the Mayor event at the FCP. Of course, Mayor. Carol was there, as well as Todd and myself attended, and stakeholders there seem to have a lot of interest in, you know, what we do here and kind of create some communication between the planning board and the FCP in the future. I mean, years past, there was, there was even a subcommittee, I think, yes, or the old bid had, and there was a rotating kind of visitor from the board, or maybe something like that. But we definitely want to keep talking with the FCP because they have a lot of kind of parallel goals and objectives as we do, and I want to make sure that we're not stepping on anybody's toes there and vice versa. So just want to make sure that moves of communication is open. And I think that's it. Much to mention the two, the two coordinates are right.
Thanks. Item four on the agenda is HPC comments. I do see that in addition to our liaison is here, the HPC chair is on Zoom. Dennis, is there anything you need to share?
Couple of things. At our last meeting, Richard Giffen was appointed chairperson, and Emily Hammer was appointed vice chair. Also, some of the HPC members are attending Rutgers Training. It's called Back to Basics, a primer for New Jersey Historic Preservation Commissions and planners. So we're looking forward to that. That's in March. And those are the comments at this point. We will be evaluating Spice Factory at the next month's HB comments to the planning board.
Item five on the agenda, approval of minutes from the January 10th, 2023 reorganization meeting. Those were previously circulated. There's one correction I did see from the members. Right.
Mayor Carroll.
Are there any other corrections? I'm sorry. I need a motion in a second on this. Are there any other corrections?
Mayor Carroll? Yeah. Mr. Cook?
Yes.
This is Engelbert?
Yes.
Mr. Campion?
Yes.
Mr. Dasha?
Yes.
Mr. Levitt?
Yes.
Ms. Kiffin?
Yes.
Ms. Weitzman?
Yes.
Mr. Semino?
Okay. Item six on our agenda this evening is, last night at its, the council meeting ordinance 2023-01 was introduced on the first reading floodplain management regulations of the Borough of Flemington. Those were circulated a draft form was supposed to circulate two weeks ago. Do we have the final form of those?
I don't. There was no change.
There's no change?
There was no change in the draft, and the draft has been approved by the DEP.
Okay. All right. So Carol, why don't you walk over what we're doing here?
Yep. So the board must review this ordinance, this proposed ordinance that has been introduced by the council on first reading, make determination as to whether it is substantially, is not substantially inconsistent with the borough's master plan. If there is any inconsistency, if they want to report any of those to the council, and if they have any recommendations to the council. Obviously, since this is the standard ordinance approved by DEP, that review is somewhat limited, but the standard is the same.
Maybe you can walk through a little bit the why and the what. Again, it's a long ordinance, and it's state form, so it's just you already have a flood, or is flood damage prevention ordinance in your current regulations, all accounts of. You need this essentially to in order to be eligible for the federal flood insurance program. And the state has in the past outlined it basically, well, from provisions for these orders is the sound document. This is a revised version of the ordinance, so much we call how many provisions should be accepted, but this particular one is essentially, well, my opinion, a modified basically to address either positions from either. They're basically stepping up all, but they're not changing the mapping. It refers to mapping you currently have. You have two maps that cover the Borough of Flemington. One of them shows basically all the floodplain. There's a little chunk of it that falls in the southeast corner that doesn't have any floodplain in it. The one map basically shows the, the two major things, the Bushkill and the Walnut with the main channel, both of them being defined streams, defined needing to be studied when they have flood elevations associated with it. And a small trivia cherry comes up Park Avenue here from the Bushkill. That's basically, it's delineated, but it's not established flood elevation. And the ordinance, the criteria goes to establishes how you establish base flood elevations. And this case, the basic payment is this map information you get, depending on how you're calculating the base flood elevation. You're basically adding a foot to that, and in some cases, you're adding a three feet, again, depending on how the stream, depending on the sort. There was a few options available to the borough in terms of fines or a enhancement criteria, but basically, I look at this, it's like they're just going to the standard criteria. They're not enhancing anything necessarily. Just want to give it some weeds. No, no, I think, I think it's fine. That is, I guess we've talked about these with master plans, maybe you can address that.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. I would say that this ordinance is specifically consistent with the map plan. A lot of times we talk about how it's not inconsistent, but this one specifically is. On page 52 of our land use settlement, it says, just as an example, the borough should continually monitor state issued environmental regulations to ensure compliance. They should include stormwater management regulations and flood hazard regulations at a minimum. So very clearly, it was recommending that we do exactly what's been proposed, which is that they have flood regulations to be able to say, right?
Before we go any further, I did see Mr. Waintrout pop onto Zoom. So are you there? Just want to make sure if you can say here. Or not?
He's on mute.
He's, while he's also on off camera, so we have to actually see him, make sure he's, or hear that he's here. All right. So he's not, he's actually not here yet, but as soon as, as soon as he gets, as soon as I see a flash, I can interrupt wherever we get her to. None noted in this. Okay.
Can I, one thing about the stormwater ordinance is it specifically calls for a floodplain manager, which the state of New Jersey has been requiring on municipalities, it has since 1997, and most municipalities have not done it. So Flemington Burnet does have floodplain manager on staff. They assigned us one, so they would be the person, name is, got to get this right. The top of the dog, Monash, who would be reviewing site plans for us under the floodplain, under the floodplain manager's role.
And so when a development application comes in, so this is an additional review that happened.
If it's anywhere near the floodplain staff.
Yeah, I think you're not, don't call me out. I think your private ordinance defined the Mike Campion, I believe, as the part of the manager. You're respective of that. You're establishing that as a part of this ordinance. And the, when an application comes in, ready building permit, whether it's before this board or not, they need a floodplain certificate, which establishes base flood elevations or confirms the establishment of base flood elevation to the construction and the elevation of the building, what proof and all that. So there's nothing we need to change to our checklist, right? It's already, it's already part of our to, we're bringing in somebody else for view. I want to make sure that our checklist reflects that. I don't know. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a ordinance, it's actually not in your lens, it's a separate ordinance. And you're going to get a building permit into floodplain, you need to go through this process. So this person will be reviewing that. So I guess if we had an application that was partially in the floodplain, or any approval requirement would be subject to getting Okay. I want to make sure we don't need to update our predeveloping checklist.
Yeah, and I guess the question would be, is this something that you would require in order to give your proper analysis of an application? Because if it is, then we would want it as checklist item as opposed to a condition of approval.
If the entire development was in floodplain, and it was, that was critical, but if it was in a floodplain, it's going to be subject to DEP regulations, which are also going to adopt something similar to this, so.
What you could also do is, if, we could take a look at that.
I don't want to have to look at your checklist. I think it might, something like that might already be in there.
And the board can always ask, I'm sorry. One of the things that we're going to be doing in probably on the 13th of February is introducing an ordinance for application fees so that the taxpayers aren't paying people to have things reviewed, like, like any construction. So I don't know how that would work here to make sure that an application, an applicant is also being required to escrow extra money to have it reviewed by the floodplain manager.
Right. So that would cover somebody, let's say someone in a flooding system, probably what's doing this normal construction, didn't trigger site plan review.
That would go through, right. You would apply to jet client, our code enforcer, code officer, code officer, construction officer would then trigger the review, a minor fee paid, like fifty dollars for that review.
Right.
So that's exactly how it would work.
Okay. So then if jet client's going to see all of these applications, then it falls on, and if it does require a trigger site planet or variance or whatever, it has to come to us, then we already have a mechanism in place, is what I'm saying. I, I would hate for someone to come to a public hearing, missing this piece, and then having to provide additional testimony after the fact, and want it to be caught before, you know. It would be an annual review. I don't have a checklist. I'm not sure. It sounds like it's coming. I just, I was just raising the question.
To that point, does it mean it would have to be done before they come to us, so we would know what the results of it was? Or is it done after? Because then, if we've given a determination that it's done afterwards, can I put a change of determination?
That's why, that's why I'm asking a question.
Right.
But I think
We need to know when it's going to get done, right?
Isn't it similar to an outside agency approval, where if they, if the floodplain manager decides that, I have this situation actually in another town, the project was distracted, floodplain manager decided, decided, determined that it was violating the floodplain management regulations, and the developers need to make the change because it was inconsistent with planning force. They'll go back, the changes, it'll, you need to reapply for final site plan approval to update it to reflect what is in the site.
Right. Which is why I, I would much, much rather have an applicant add that before we've gone through all of the hearing and all the rest. I'm pretty sure your ordinance requires showing delineation of floodplains. It is. It is. That's there, but that is, so if it's in there, it's fine. The floodplain location is an actual requirement, but delineated, then you're evaluating it as part of your review. Then a floodplain, any action you take would be subject to approval by the floodplain manager of the, of what's being proposed. And again, it would also be subject to DEP review, and they're more than most likely be subject to the review under their.
So if you'll make some interruptions. 717.
Yeah, so we see Mr. Waintrout.
It actually was 714, about last.
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
If we do it before, there's a chance that we change in, in the hearing. We ask for this to be changed, and then it has to go back. So
That's my concern.
But, but doing it afterwards, the risk is on the developer that it's done through us, and then it's, and the risk is that it doesn't pass. So that, that, we have to put that we have to put it into, into a resolution effectively. It has to pass down, and it's
On a state highway, you would, you would rule on an application subject to the applicant's ability to get permits from the state highway routes, or from DEP, if it's a, you know, it's a short. Right. I'm thinking like, how many comes in, and their entire, the site, the site plan presented and granted approvals by the board wouldn't work because of the determination of the flood administrator, whatever. They're looking at, you know, flooding managers, looks at, yeah, where you've cited this building, where you've cited this access, where you cited the parking, or whatever, just doesn't work. I would hate for that to happen on compliance all the way down the road. I would much rather have that upfront.
And I'd actually, as a fellow member, like to know what they thought about a one that was right in the floodplain.
Right.
And know what that manager thinks about the proposal, too. But then that means we have to send it to them first before we do our, and the timing of our
Well, we do, right. And we do have, listen, we have a mechanism already, right? We have, like, HPC does review, Environmental Commission does review, Shantry does review, Water and Sewer does review, Fire Department does a review letter. Like, that's what I'm saying. Like, those are, those are checklist items for us, which is why I thought maybe that's where we want, we would want, I would, as a board member, I would just say, I would like to have the review of this person before the public hearing commences, so that we have the information and members of the public have the information.
All right. So I'm looking at name signature license, title block, key map, schedule of fire track boundary, proof of tax, certification blocks, mining, that's insufficient.
Would this professional commit to that timeline?
Well, that's
We'll be able to achieve it?
Oh, yes.
Okay. All right. Well, I'm going to assume that it's a large project. They would want more time.
Well, but if it's a large project, we're going to know about it. We need more time. Engineering planning needs more time.
All existing streets, watercourses, floodways, or flood hazard areas, depth to seasonal high water tables, zero to one feet, soils, flooded areas, blah, blah, blah. Flood hazard area and existing trees in area of proposed disturbance. We got a footnote there.
Showing the floodplain is a requirement to check. Right. I think we're talking about something. I'm talking, I'm not just talking about showing the floodplain. I'm talking about a review by this person who you're now Well, that's, yeah, that's definitely not going to be in their business.
They get basically a certificate that says this is the floodplain elevation established.
Now, we have
from that, from our consultant, from our floodplain.
Top of the list of DEP.
If, yeah, it was something to that church.
But it's more, I mean, you know, you could have a lot, and the corner of the lot could be in the floodplain, but where they want to put their building isn't.
And it's not, and it wouldn't matter to our criteria, or whatever, or the
We didn't know it's not there.
And then what they want to build is going to
work.
Follow FEMA and DEP.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
Deciding whether we'll do this before, we want to see it as, as a professional report, or whether it's okay to see after, if it's a small corner, and it's not going to make a difference.
Which is why I'm saying it's a check, which is why I'm saying it's a checklist requirement, because the fact, that's completeness. Do they have everything on the checklist? And we can grant a temporary or partial or permanent waiver.
And we'd be able to let the developer know at that point, applicant know which one it's going to be, so they're aware.
That's why I want them to be aware of this, because if it's on our checklist, does that mean we can't use escrow fees to pay for that for a little bit? So just the site plan, we don't have
They have to post, they have to post escrow upon application, and that covers the cost of our professionals for you.
That would be on the checklist.
That would want to bring to everybody's attention that it's that is that the this also can be, this review could be done simultaneously to the review that it's, as, as we're reviewing for completeness. Because usually what happens is it gets submitted, and then by the time it gets on our agenda, and we, you know, our professionals review it, there's, there's some time left left there. So I don't, I think it's okay if the if the floodplain manager is reviewing it simultaneous to the lead up, or even while we are doing completeness, because even at completeness, we can say we do this all the time, where we, we do temporary, temporary waivers for completeness. We don't actually hear the application until the floodplain manager has established that elevation, but those two things can happen simultaneously. So we're not burdening the applicant with having to go in a, you know, in a
No, no, no. That's right.
Just an idea, perhaps we should simply amend the ordinance or make a recommendation to planning boards to amend the ordinance to say any application subject to, planning board application subject to this ordinance shall be sent to the floodplain manager in the same way that we say that for any applicant who's in that's subject to the HPC ordinance. So it's in their ordinance, applications go there for review. You can handle it the same way here, and then we can sort of have that process proceed as we've talked about. Carol, is that considered a, a minor? Or substantial?
I don't, we have a deadline here for the bird of the office.
We do. We're under a DEP, a DEP timeline. I mean, they give us a couple of weeks if we needed it. It's not, I don't think it's a problem, but would you consider that substantial?
I don't think you would.
Just to say that, I don't think it makes sense. Oh, is that what you said? Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry.
Right, but we
I think this is the, this is establishing what the DEP has indicated is required, subject to the minor changes that we've done. I think the requirements of our particular application should be outside of.
So then, so then what I'm hearing is, so what, what we want to do is, what I'm hearing is, we're, one, determining that it is consistent with the master plan documents, and that we would recommend that council amend our land development ordinance, chapter whatever, 26, wherever it falls, to include this as an item on our, that, you know, as part of our review, we could figure out the language.
So Carrie, would we prepare that and send it to council?
Yes. So I've actually prepared a resolution for this tonight. I mean, I'll give you the number of what that adds up.
It's going to be five.
Five, okay. So the way that we prepared it is, I've given options in there. So if what I'm hearing is correct, the resolution would be amended to indicate that the, in the movement of a motion to second, to, that it is not substantially inconsistent, and to add the recommendation that council amend whatever other portion of the ordinance or checklist relating to the determination of floodplain management.
But not in, but not in the ordinance.
Not this part of the year, or such.
Correct. Right. But who prepares that ordinance?
Well, that's what I was just going to mention, is it can come from us. Like, it can come, it can come, we can, it, it goes both ways. We can create, we can make a record draft and ordinance change and send it up to council, and then it gets first reviewed, then it comes back down, and then it goes back up again.
Correct.
So it's just a four-piece system, as opposed to if council starts it, it's a three-step system, but it makes sense for, for us to, you know, it's because, and we're going to talk about this later with the, with the summary report in the end of the year. We always have these little things as we go through the year that add up, and we can, we can address those all at the same time with a, you know, with a subcommittee for ordinancees. We can talk about that later. But I think it makes sense to start it here and send it up and go back down, and then send it
Personally, I think it's easier to start here.
Yeah, I agree. So that's what my recommendation was. And I did want to just add one thing, because we learned a lot yesterday, and one of the things that concerned me was this seemed really quick. And, you know, we were, we, we as council were privy, we as council were privy to the, the, you know, the correspondence back and forth. The, the borough engineer had already drafted this back in December, and had gone back and forth with DEP, and then, you know, got his recommendations back, and then updated the ordinance. All that happened before the end of the year, like before December 31st. So what I was wondering was, when did we find out we had to do this? Like, why is this so rushed at the end of the year? They found out in November that they had, that this was how late the state burdened every municipality in the, in the state on this. So I was quite surprised, shocked, and this made that the state would burden every municipality, literally the last one. Did I not write?
Well, that, so it's mostly, the truth is that if we had had a floodplain manager, he would have known to tell us, but because we didn't have one, nobody alerted us until the DEP did. So in municipalities, like where I, where I retired from, we had a floodplain manager who alerted us to it, and it was passed and adopted and done before I retired on May 1st. So, but, but we didn't have one, right?
So we didn't, we were
Right. He has that information on. So it is true. The DEP alerted all the other municipalities, hundreds of them, in November.
Tell me, we're not rushing it. We're just late, basically, to get
So they, they actually, one of those approved and adopted by June of last year.
So we're actually really late.
So, yeah, after they got everybody in, they started looking at who didn't apply, and they realized there was a big oops for the sting, basically.
How many people, how many municipalities don't have floodplain areas and stuff?
Right now, probably a few.
Now.
But I mean, I think back in November was A lot.
Yeah.
Well, any town that doesn't have substantial flooding, I mean, you know, where I was working, had eighty percent of the towns in a floodplain, so we, you know, we have one. Yeah.
Right. So it wasn't, it makes sense that we might not have had.
Right. So, yeah, a lot of towns in Hunter County.
I just want to make so on record, if
No, no, it's okay. I want to, I want to, I want to do this, so I need a motion and a second.
So I'll, I'll move that we, we find that ordinance 2023-01 is do I use the double negative?
Double negative.
Not substantially inconsistent with our master plan, and as well as sending up to council our recommendations for how our own existing land use ordinance should be changed to reflect it to be easier for an applicant to understand what's required before an application is given.
Actually, I would go, I would say we were talking more of like making this a checklist item as, as part of the developer.
So I have met the council.
So, so a recommendation to the council, that we would not have to recommend that, the checklist item is ours. We don't have to recommend that.
It's just ordinance, yeah.
So it adds to the words. All right. So to update the ordinance to allow us to, exactly what I just said, because it really is, whether we do it as a checklist or whatever.
The council amend other provisions of the borough ordinances and your board checklist to allow for reviewing determination by the floodplain administrator.
As part of the normal
As part of the normal application
Application
Review process.
Sorry, that said it was specifically inconsistent. What's the difference between, no, I just want to get it right for the record.
The actual fact is, it is specifically consistent, but the legal requirement is that it's not substantially inconsistent. So we're just going to stick with the legal requirements.
So I have a motion. I have a second to that.
Your heart seconds.
Okay. Is there any further forward discussion? I'm going to make sure, specifically, is there anything, any questions or discussion, folks who are remote? Hannah, Dawn, Mike, James? Hannah, Don, Mike, James. I gotta, I'm gonna get them first.
Is this a motion to move the ordinance back to the council or is this also a motion to do the checklist?
Oh, you go.
Well, it's, we're, we're making a recommendation to council about the checklist, that's gonna be a separate action.
Okay, if I have a comment about that when you make that.
Okay.
Well, hold on now, but. Sorry, tell us what you're doing.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, so, so, so James shook his head no, Hannah shook her head no. Dennis, Don, Mike, do you have anything else to add? No, no, we're good, we're good, okay, so folks here. Good?
Good.
Good, Tom.
My question was, if there is an area in either redevelopment that transcends our ordinances, could that also transcend this ordinance? Or is this like a log style?
No, so I, I don't, I don't think that we can, because it's a state requirement, but more importantly, our redevelopment plans. They might supersede the zoning that exists on the property, but it doesn't supersede the whole ordinance.
Thank you. Alright. Trent, Susan, good? Karen? Heard everything, alright, so.
Just quickly to Bob's point, so what this is doing is this is making the planning, the requisite planning and legal finding of consistency. But we're making a recommendation that the council amend the ordinances and or the checklist to make this part of the development application review process.
We're doing that, I just want to remind, I don't know who's around, just some nervous, but we had a long discussion years ago about amending the checklist.
Yes.
That it was really kind of outdated, it was a bit archaic, you know, I had offered, even I gave you some templates of other checklists and what.
So let me, just to preempt that, um, one of the things I want to cover under um. Professional reports down the road, that later in tonight's meeting, is exactly all of the things that we want to fix in ordinances. And see if we can get a small group working on that, so yes, I want that, yes, we're gonna put this in here. We, we've got master plan stuff, like we, we've got a bunch of work needs worked that I'd like for us to take on, but I was gonna deal with it later.
I mean, I, I'm a planner, I mean, you can do this piecemeal, but.
No, I want it all together.
We've talked about many of the checklists years ago.
And we're gonna initiate it here.
Yep.
As Mary suggested, and that's something we could, could. And, you know, we can make all different checks.
That's, that's what I, that's kind of where I want to go, I want to make, I want to do this in one. Package, because it'll be a lot more efficient, so. Alright, so we've got a motion, a second, the discussion is completed, Eileen, you call the roll.
Uh, Mr. Cook?
Yes.
This is Englehart?
Yes.
Mayor Carol?
Yes.
Mr. Campion?
Yes.
Mr. Dachshund?
Yes.
Mr. Levitt?
Yes.
Mr. Giffen?
Yes.
Mr. Weitzman?
Yes.
Mr. Semino?
Yes. Okay, thank you all, alright, so item seven on the agenda was ordinance review, amendment to the canvas orders, as we heard from Mayor Carol earlier.
We want to adopt the resolution.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, no, we have to do the resolutions, right?
To amend, we need to amend the agenda. Okay, that's a motion to take now.
So now I'm going for the canvas.
Thank you.
Alright, so item seven on our agenda was an ordinance review, um, actually there are two pieces, one was introduced to Mona's table that council, um. Two thousand twenty-three dash oh three was one bill of land development, a chapter of land development ordinance. Um, we're gonna, we, we're gonna table this until our next, uh, meeting on the fifth, uh, Friday. Um, because council is gonna have to reintroduce it, um, at their next meeting on Thursday. So, we, I don't think we need to vote to table, uh, we're just gonna, we're not amending it, we're just table it.
And we don't need to amend the agenda, we're just gonna table that item so that it's the next meeting.
Alright, uh, item eight is discussion of our annual report. So each year we are required um, to issue a, planning boards and zoning boards of adjustment are, are, are uh. Required to issue reports, uh, the planning board report is about activity and what was granted, the uh. Zoning Board of Adjustment Report is about um, all the variances that have been granted and to see whether or not there are recommendations to the governing body. So we keep getting the same variance release, maybe we need to think about changing an ordinance or something like that, so since we are a combined. Land Development Board, we have one, everything all together, um, this was circulated um. By email. And I wanted to know, um, essentially, we just have, have. Um, we just have to kind of approve the report as it's written and if there's any discussion, um, items there. So, I'm gonna open it up for, for discussion, if there's anything folks have to uh, make mention of. I have one, yeah, um, I remember last year I commented about having a list of the actual variances that were granted for the year. And uh, thank you very much for including that. Greatly appreciate it.
It was a great suggestion, yeah.
Yeah, um, thank you. And the only other thing was, I did assemble a small table of what the variances were and the only thing that I could see that we did twice. Was maximum lighting, which I personally have no interest in changing. Yeah, maximum lighting, we. That came up twice, that, that was about it. Other than that, everything else was seemingly unique.
You created a whole spreadsheet, I, I, I know. Don't be. I love it.
It's like, that's, and it's planning there, they're getting.
No, I'm like, good, anybody else, any other comments on the, the annual report?
Um, just for Carol, I feel like it's appropriate for me to abstain because I wasn't here for any of this. Almost like minutes of the year.
Um. I don't necessarily, I mean, we're approving the report that was prepared, but I necessarily know that you need to abstain. And we're having a discussion as to whether based upon the report, there's any recommendations to council. To make any changes to the ordinance, so it's up to you, if you want to abstain, you can, um, I don't think it's an association for you to do that, but.
I think we should take, it maybe take this opportunity to, to, because there's, there, there may be stuff in here. As well as our master, you know, local hanging, the master plan stuff, maybe now's the time that we.
That's good, wait a minute. In terms of the other stuff for ordinance thing?
Yeah, yeah.
No, I was gonna, I was gonna do that later with the professional ports.
And to know if it's released.
Yeah, no, because. It, it's, it did.
It doesn't, doesn't.
I want to keep this, I want to keep this particular. That sort of requirement straightforward, so again, if, if there's any specific recommendations that came out of the annual report, I want us to transmit those, but other than that, we can have that other discussion.
Very good.
Um, any, anybody remote, have anything? Yes, we're good, we're good. Okay, so what I need then is a motion and a second, I swear they dropped, um, our. Approve the annual report as, uh, together by our board secretary, um, and we are making no recommendations, uh, to the governing body. That's the motion, that's the motion.
Um, I'm sorry, I'm gonna stop this second.
We can stop.
Yeah, um, there was a. Comment made by the mayor last night. In support of no, um, which we've said since, you know, the inception of time, um, in our two thousand ten, I think, master plan about. Um, trying to eliminate um. Offices on the first floors.
Retail, retail only on the first floor.
Oh, is.
Two thousand fifteen.
Retail only versus no offices?
It's the same thing, but it's.
Well, no, it's, it's not, so I just want to clarify. I guess the only, the only thing is, I'm, I'm, I'm remembering that we discussed it in the LeRoux a- application and that adds on this list, so. I do want to note that, I mean, we can certainly address it in, you know, later in, in the subcommittee conversation, but. That one in particular just kind of.
Yeah, I don't think, if, based on what you're saying, Susan, uh, there are things on this list that. By themselves, don't necessarily necessitate changing an ordinance or requesting or recommending the change of ordinance. However, I think there are things within our master plan and within this, and within just things that we, that relate, but as far as this, I'm, I'm good to go with saying that. Anything on this specific report does not necessarily necessitate us recommending an ordinance change.
Correct, and I think Trent was on the, the right track, not to elaborate on that, but you know, the whole point of this is to take a look at what you've granted throughout the year. And say, alright, in ninety-nine percent of the time, we've granted front yard set variances for structures in this district. So let's recommend to council that we fix, fix it, okay? So.
Don't miss any of them.
And I think some of, some of these issues we had the year prior and the year prior and the year prior, so they'll come up. From our master.
Sorry, I just don't want to miss anything, I'm sorry.
Alright, no, no, it's okay, it's okay, so, um, I still need a motion.
I have a quick question, from your point to kind of, because you, the wording that you just said that we are recommended, we are not recommended to make changes, but you said we might be talking about some changes. Are we reserving the right to not make, we don't want to talk about them now, basically, and we don't want to recommend those changes right now.
Based upon what was granted last year.
Yeah, but we want to.
But we'll talk about it later, yeah.
But by saying.
Serve the right.
Is, is, can we reserve the right to tell them, to tell council, we might have something in a. On further review of our report, or we have to issue this report now?
We have to issue this report now and our review should be again, based upon. The spreadsheet that Trent said, which is. Exactly, that's saying again, looking at the regularity with which we granted certain variances, this board can at any time make a recommendation to council, anytime.
Right, I was just wondering that the wording you used, I was worried that that, that we couldn't do that, but we, we can do that anyway.
In connection with the adoption of the report, we're not making any recommendations to council at this time for any changes based upon the decisions that were made during two thousand twenty-three.
That's, so I'm still looking for a motion.
I'll, I'll move that, um, uh, what do we do, we're just approving, uh, this, this yearly report and not making any recommendations or making no recommendations. However, the law requirements say it, um, to council based on variances granted in twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Thank you. Please call it off.
Mr. Cook?
Yeah.
It's, Mayor Carol?
Yes.
This is Engelhart?
Yes.
Mr. Campion?
Yes.
Mr. Dachshund?
Yes.
Mr. Levitt?
Yes.
Mr. Giffen?
Yes.
Mr. Weitzman?
Yes.
And Mr. Semino?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
We like that fun here, we do, well, fun.
Their definition of fun, um.
I think the comment that Miss Engelhart said, I just want everybody here to know that I did bring up the first floor after talking to Beth, um, a couple of weeks ago. Um, about considering an ordinance to adopt that change. Um, so we're gonna hopefully be discussing it in our next meeting and work session if I can get. Um, the right people there to participate in that discussion, which would include Beth Ward, uh, and Kyle, as well as Rob and Lafferty. I did not have time to call anybody today and ask them, but I'm hoping to, you know, that's been in the master plan for eight years now. And in light of, um, the redevelopment project of Main Street, it seems like, you know, to get that economy scale, well, everybody wants to come to Flemington and. The landlords still aren't fixing their buildings, that now's the time to, to make that change, to try and help disperse some more economy scale.
Item. Nine, sorry, I lost my place, item nine on the agenda this evening of the continuation. Of the public hearing for one sixty-one Vilche LLC block thirty-seven, lots forthcoming within one sixty-one Main Street, continued from. Um, November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two, um, what I'm going to do, um, on the laptop there, I'm gonna. Promote that computer to panelists, so if we can just click on okay.
Jeff, I just want to, for the record, um, Mayor Carol and Mr. Semino reviewed all the recordings from the November fifteenth, twenty-two. Uh, public hearing and, um, I'm sorry, I get very.
Okay, so, and if you can also turn the camera on, uh, click on, uh, start video. At the bottom. You did not, don't unmute, the, the audio will pick up also, and if you could shift, this goes under your tilt, the laptop down a little bit so that it's not pointing to the ceiling. Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you, alright, just everyone remote can see it here.
Thanks, Dr. Ething, I, my name is Robin Wright, I'm an attorney with, uh, Lans and Lanza here in Flemington. We represent one sixty-one Dolce LLC, uh, one sixty-one Dolce LLC is the owner of, uh. Dolce restaurant on one sixty-one Main Street, along with the adjoining property at one fifty-nine Main Street. Uh, the applicant, um. Has applied for site plan approval with variances, uh. There's an outdoor patio area by the restaurant and they want to put a retractable awning over the patio area as well as a window structure around it. Um, we were here on November fifteenth to begin our application, the variances we're seeking are, uh. We're approaching to the front yard setback, uh, there's an existing approachment, but the structural encroach as well. Uh, we need a variance for impervious coverage, uh, we're not adding any more impervious coverage, but it is a non-conforming condition. Uh, with respect to parking, we've agreed that we're gonna provide a cross-access easement. For this project, but the neighboring project, so there should be sufficient, uh, parking. Uh, when we were here in November, uh, the, the owner of Dolce restaurant, uh, Dolce LLC, Mr. Adrian, the president's here, he described the basis for the application. Uh, he described his operations, we had Kelly O'Sutch testify, he was recognized as an expert planner and engineer from Engineering and Land Paying Associates and High Branch. He described the site plan, he also described the reasons for the variances. And then we had Mr. Eagle Beljener testify, he is a representative from Sun Art, which is a company that is manufacturing the. The awning structure with the windows. And, um, the board requested additional information at the end of our presentation, the board wanted, uh, information about elevations, drainage, um. Puttings, lighting, and it also wanted to see renderings, um, they wanted to see what, what this, uh, project would actually look like. So on January twelfth, we submitted, um, some additional information, we submitted a, uh, a revised site plan. We submitted a, um, revised sheet called project production plan inspection. Uh, we submitted a footing plan from the manufacturer, we submitted details, uh, showing metal constructions. We submitted a document entitled ground rain project showing drainage detail, and we also submitted eighteen pages of, um, color rendering. And so, uh, at the appropriate time, we would ask to have those items, uh. Markets exhibits, substantive exhibits, um, tonight, I have Kelly O'Sutch back to testify as to the changes to the site plan. And I have, um, Mr. Eagle Beljener, the answer to questions about the actual, um. Structure that's going to be installed, and Mr. McPodge, that contains many questions for him, so with that, I would ask that, um, for O'Sutch.
Mr. Chair, with regard to the exhibits, they were submitted at least ten days prior to the meeting, where they also placed on the website. Yes, okay, so what I'd like to do for, uh, for each of the marketing, um, will include that as part of A one, which is the application. We will outline them in the resolution, uh, whichever the board, you know. This is from the board, if there's gonna be any changes to those exhibits here tonight, we'll mark them. Or to that submission, we will mark them separately as exhibits.
Um, so. You're not gonna use the, not gonna, you know, the digital version to share, alright, you know, that's perfectly fine, so if members are. Members of the board who are participating remotely or members of the public who are, just, who are remote, um, all of these are on the borough website, they were also, uh, for members of the board to distribute by email. Um, a couple of weeks ago, so, um, last week.
Yeah. We could go Friday.
We could go Friday, so you should all have them to pull them up digitally if you want, uh, I just want to make sure everyone sees everything. Thank you.
Donna's giving the thumbs up there.
Good.
Hi, evening, members of the board, um, at the last hearing, there were some questions and some inconsistency, I guess, arisen. From our testimony in regards to how the plan laid out and how it tied in with. The, um, canopy structure itself and how that canopy structure tied into the building. Uh, so since that last hearing, power office along with Sun Art went out to the site. And remeasured things typically, we're out there measuring things, make sure they, uh, all coincide. So since the last hearing in November, to today, we revised the plan, have one concise plan. And what, what has been submitted to the board now, uh, is a very consistent, uh, layout of the canopy. Uh, so the structure has changed in what was previously being proposed was an angled roof coming straight down off the top. And there was concern or question into how that structure was gonna tie in on the roof structure of the exit thing. Um, building, I don't want to get too far into architectural subject on our, could like expression, however, there was a big concern with the existing, um. For lack of a better term, small room coming off the front and whether or not that was going to be affected in regards to the historic preservation. Uh, so we have sent revised structure, including instead of having a flat roof, it is now a, an arch roof that mirrors and mimics the existing structure. Basically following originally coming out towards Main Street. And is, does not interact or affect that existing small roof coming up. Uh, and in fact, the historic preservation, uh, board, uh, emailed us on. Uh, Sunday in this week, noting that they reviewed the revised plan and they have no concern with the revised structure. So I think from a historic issue, I think we've addressed that.
That actually I would like to mark as an exhibit if we're gonna reference it, so what uh we will mark as exhibit A nine. Uh will be the email, that is an email from uh Richard Giffen dated Sunday, January twenty second, one forty five P M, and specifically states. Um I can confirm the original application was previously reviewed by the A P C last year, we had no comments. The revised application below appears to provide updates and clarifications to details. Properties within the historic district, but is not designated as a tour, A P C has no comments on the revised application.
Thank you, Karen. Well. Uh so in regards to the actual. Physical dimension change that have happened since the structure was adopted. Uh previously, the the canopy structure was gonna be seven hundred and eighty seven square feet, with the revised dimensions, it is now proposed at eight hundred and fifteen square feet. Uh in doing that, we've actually reduced the front yard setback relief that we were previously asking for, which was two point seven feet. Is now further back from the front yard and at that four point two feet. Off of the front yard. Uh the structure is fully within that existing brick knee wall, and I'm sure you all seen it, and. I'm not gonna. Explain the renderings later, but the the structure fits inside and. Based on the existing. Dimensions or geometry of that existing wall, there is now kind of a niche in that canopy structure to fit around the southern wall. There was another question in regards to. How the drainage of the structure was going to work with the existing patio and the elements there, that last hearing it testified that there would be. Um. Uh trench drains tied in on the structure, and there's a gutter system that son can. Uh speak to later, we have since added the trench drain around the structure, and when we went back out to the site um. In the past month, there's existing trench drains on the front of the patio that these would tie into, and that those for the ditch guard, those the uh borough writers. Uh there's also a outstanding question as to the canopy footing detail. On sheet four, which is shown here, we have added the the footing detail of what the canopy would look like. Uh as long as, as well as details to the trench drain itself. And there was a question as to the fence height uh being proposed or expanded around the the tack enclosure. And we provided detail to to clarify that. Once again, it's not gonna exceed more than six feet, and it's gonna match the existing wood structure that is there. Um I believe there was also a question or a um. Recommendation by the board provided that if there was any proposed signs to be added to the. Structure or the doorway of the structure, we provide that now, the applicant has decided at this time, they do not want to provide any additional size, the. The existing facade sign will remain as is, and will be able to be seen through the last pass out of the proposed structure, so they don't necessarily need for a new sign at this time. Um and then I think the the last remaining item was a lighting plan being provided. Um which we've added to our plans, sheet six of our plan. Um the proposed lighting is. Interior in that it's affixed to the structure inside of the structure, however. Since the entire structure has black wall, there is light emanating from those proposed lights. Uh and in reviewing the lighting plan that is provided, we are. Spilling over light over the property lines from lot fourteen to lot fifteen. As well as lot fourteen to the borough right away on Main Street, that would otherwise exceed the ordinance limits um. And the. The ordinance section that I have is sixteen thirty three. Uh part C, uh specifically. Uh maximum vertical illumination when measured at a point five feet. Within an adjacent property line at a height of five feet, facing light fixture can be no greater than point one vertical foot candles. Where we're uh our maximum is actually a one foot candle. Uh and once again, that's at the the property line between lot fourteen and lot fifteen. And for the boards, if the to clarify, the applicant owns both lot fourteen and fifteen, so. The exceedance of the the ordinance is at a property line in which they own evidence being agreed to that they're gonna kinda combine these. Not combined, I'm gonna take a setup, there's a shared parking agreement between the two properties, so they will be tied together in perpetuity through that shared parking agreement. So the lighting. While it is exceeding the ordinance, there's no real negative impact in that the owner owns both property. And there's an agreement. I believe, other than that, all other comments, at least from an engineering perspective, have been. Addressed at the last hearing. Um. And my findings as regard uh in regarding to the planning testimony. Do not change based on minor changes as I see them in the proposed site plan.
So um Kelly, the um the uh front yard setback ordinance was initially uh the variant, so we were thinking of this at like two point.
Two point seven feet, and is now four point two feet.
More than four now.
Is, yes.
Okay, and do you have any comments on the documentation that was submitted by um by Sun Art?
Um I I note specifically, there was, you know, requested elevation or units from the board in regard to how the structure is going to. Um look, wants to. Should the board approve it, and should this be constructed, how is it specifically gonna look from Main Street, and specifically straight on, and I think that the front more. North looking south town, maybe. Um I believe some of us on a very good job of providing, not only those two projects, but a few others that provide a lot of different bird I U and um additional views. Uh one thing that's very clear in that um rendering is that this structure is going to. Uh basically be in line with the uh canopy structure coming out on the. Neighborhood properties to the south, it's basically following that line, which I think further um. You know, goes to the planning in that this is fitting in with the uh neighborhood in that the the line of that awning is in. Um line with the neighborhood structure. Uh in addition to that, I think the, you know, the colors of the um. Proposed structure being, you know, black or neutral, don't make it stand out like a sort of thumb, I think there was a comment, you know, not have. A lot of that from neon green or, you know, lime green structure, but I think we found something that's neutral and fits in with the um the community.
Do you have anything else that you want to add or?
Not specifically.
Okay, I have no further questions.
So I'm gonna just check um. On the updated testimony, I don't think so, but I'm gonna ask Jade, do you have any other questions for hand in here?
I don't, thank you.
Um Bob.
I know it's not what I go to my report, but.
Well, I think we have, we did we go back to the report a little bit last time, and it was.
Yeah, revised plan, so.
Right, oh, which was your review letter.
I was gonna go to my review letter as to what, how they address.
Yeah, and yeah, why don't I do that now, yeah, that'd be good.
Okay, so um yeah. Then Kelly, and and indicated without additional documents to be received in here. Um and it explains certainly the the variances you should be dealing with. Uh on on the parking, they revise the parking to show the, more specifically, the parking on the adjoining property, which is part of this cross-share parking agreement. They show me twenty seven stalls, I'm certainly a report guessing, they don't give you that many. Uh these are not necessarily delineated stalls and no striping, right, and they're just showing dimensionally, they can fit twenty seven. Cars on that particular lot. Uh I indicated it again in the prior original application, we're doing a um. Indication of how they were calculating parking, I was offering two options, they're actually going with the second option, which essentially to say that the parking with. Being used within the different buildings exempt under our ordinance, uh and they're designating uh potential forty seats in the exterior. Which is now an exterior area that's gonna become the interior area. And establishing parking for that, they're also as previously requested, showing parking. But the other uses on this thing, and and they're basically coming up, they need twenty seven spaces, and they're indicating they have a total of thirty. Uh twenty seven would be on the adjoining property, part of the cross-share easement three, or be on the rear of this particular property. Uh two of those being with handicap, with the ADA standard on that. Um and that was actually I have the on page. Uh I don't know what I have for. I am T B L for our course, how they're adjusting parking. Um. We asked them to show the limits of of paving modification, they are making some adjustments uh in the paving of the handicap space to become compliant. Um we'd ask to show the limits of the uh paving modification and the grading, that's one thing Kelly I noticed wasn't really on here, you're showing some contours. Looks like you're raising the grade maybe seven inches, so there's obviously some. Pavement removal, pavement repairing, or whatever, um you just need to show the limits associated with that.
Yep.
Uh and have a detail on the plan to accommodate that, so that would be a condition, that would be a recommended condition to address as part of any revisions in the plan. That's item three, um it was in my report. They have, as I knew before, they have provided the detailed fence around the dumpster and the uh recycling facility. Um item five um. This is more of a laugh, I threw this out there before consideration, after consideration. Uh since, I said, since, let me read this, the applicant is intending to modify pavement and grading of the parking area in the rear of the building on the property in question. Then they should also consider improving the existing engines um and exit driveways, which are important to them. Uh the same as we said, we can just get in the parking area on the joint lot fifteen, which is also in poor condition. Um. I'm just putting that out there, it is a site plan application, we are coming in at the base of expansion of the use, they are gonna be doing some trimming. Um whether some repair of that driveway can be called, yeah, they throw it out to the board, uh for that and for that consideration. But it's not, that's the recommendation, that's very important, better recommendation. Um. Uh on exterior lighting, um we did indicate that there's just been lights on the adjoining parking lot, they seem to be full mounted floodlights, they're pre-existing, they're not conforming to our ordinance. Uh we did ask for lighting information, which they provided essentially for the proposed lighting. Uh I again, I just throw that out there, that the lighting on the park, the parking lot is a component of the particular application, albeit it is just a parking lot. That's not conforming lighting, so again, again, it's an item, not necessarily a requirement to make a change, but that's up to the board to certainly consider. Um. Item seven is, they're gonna need to get approval from the Borough Water and Sewer Department, I noted that they are building this. Uh are basically making this structure over the front patio area, uh which currently contains the water and sewer. Um service lines for the for the particular facility. Um noting that we're gonna need a a some, initially, board action would be to get um. With it with a waiver, separate waiver to check with side, and we're gonna be original uh determination, so. There would have to be a condition, any board approval to get signed up on that, I I don't know whether the borough would be, the borough would sort of, yeah, it's a problem not to be a condition, and he. Uh actually, we might take there. Um maybe. And the last item, I don't know if there's any other temporary waiver, but they, the plan would need to be uh modified or addressed those. Called it the word, but they just had a petrol thing at the end, if there were any. For the previous purposes, they were given, they have not a rating, maybe you may as part of the condition and void action.
Is there any other testimony based on that?
Yeah, I mean, I'll just, I'll further kind of reiterate what we said at the last hearing, um in regards to number five, which is, you know, repaving. Or adjusting the the paving on the rest of the driveway. At this time, the applicant isn't intending to repave the entire guy, just the areas specifically um near the ADA parking stuff to make compliance with the ADA. Uh is the parking lot in perfect condition, absolutely not, but it's been adequate for their use, and they intended to keep it that way. Should it, you know, further deteriorates, it's something that they should address in the future. Uh and to that point, same with the exterior lighting, there's no real. Um concern on their operations currently with how they've been utilizing. The parking lot and uh getting pedestrians or. Patients of the restaurant in and out of the site with the current lighting situation, so there's no um proposal to to adjust that at this time. Uh and then the the remaining items noted, we've certainly compiled as previously noted.
Um since he was also doing planning, what Beth, did you have anything, any other questions you needed to ask?
Um I don't have questions, but I just, a couple of items.
Yeah, please.
Yeah, so I I think this item was agrees with the last hearing, but just because we brought it up again, the fence. You said that it'll be consistent with the existing fence proximate to the the dumpster area, I just wanna make sure we get that as a condition, so I'd love to see a note on the plan, just so everybody's clear. And then on the lighting plan, a a couple of things, I appreciate that the property next door is also has the same owner, and that is important, but the other thing I wanted to note from the board is. The fact that while they do have lighting that suits the property line, they're actually at zero foot candles. Um just on the other side of the sidewalk, this sidewalk that's shown just before you get to the curb, it's noted at zero foot handle, so the lighting impact is. It it exceeds the the ordinance, but not. Too far in terms of distance from the property lines. Um and so I don't see an impact from the on the street area, and then the last item uh I have, which is also about lighting. I see on your lighting plan, it notes the potential power temperatures of the of the bulbs. If I'm reading this correctly, it looks like you have three choices. And I just wanna confirm that you're doing a a three thousand.
Yeah, I think we certainly agree for the lighting temperature that you.
Oh, so can we just clarify that for purposes of a condition, three thousand. Yeah, three thousand, two thousand K or three thousand. Yep. Um and that's all.
Okay, so are there questions from members of the board of testimony given um. This evening uh by the engineer slash fire. Um let me, let me start again with folks online, if there's any questions. Dennis, please.
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions, um one, the diagrams, um what is the front, is the front actually enclosed glass? When I look at the pictures, it almost looks like it's open um under the structure. And so are those glass panels that move?
So should we, we have the canopy manufacturer slash contractor here to further kind of explain the structure, uh with my understanding.
So why don't we just save the question for that expert who's qualified and holding it at that, so hold your question, Dennis, we're gonna come back to uh next witness. Is uh you two question, what was your other one?
Yeah, my other one was, um when I look at the pictures, the building to the right. Looks like it's the same distance towards the street, but the building to the right is set back. Quite a bit, there's a a large front lawn. On that building, I know the concern was the building to the left, where it's the same distance, but in the picture, it looks like the building to the right. Is much closer to the street than it really is. So that's more a statement, I guess.
We'll we'll save statements.
Alright. That's all we got.
Okay, thanks, um folks here in person, I'll start down here, Karen, any questions?
Um I have one that was kinda covered by Beth, like it was about the foot candles, and I guess I was gonna ask you to clarify that. It sounds like going from point one foot candle to one foot candle to those who don't know about it, seems a lot. But can you just speak to the fact that it's actually not, one foot candle is actually like the minimum for exit and building.
Yeah, I believe that that Earl's ordinance has, you know, a half foot candle minimum, for like parking areas for, you know, walking around at night. Um so, you know, when it's dark out like today, a half foot candle is not a lot, so one is, you know, minimal.
And then Beth made the point about how it encroaches onto the sidewalk, but I was just gonna ask you for testimonial. How far that encroaches, can you just testify how far that encroaches to the the building, as opposed to to the the building on lot sixteen and the other one, like. Is that's covered on your.
You're asking those the lighting foot candles, how they affect the lot.
The the one you gave us, is that at the property line, and just testify what it is at the building, that's Jason, as opposed to props around.
It's it, so the the one foot candle is at the northern property line along. The boundary between lot fourteen and lot fifteen to the combined ownership.
Right.
To the to the south of the property, the the property line at lot fourteen, and I believe that's lot sixteen further to the south.
Hmm.
Don't have that on. And it's actually lot thirteen, sorry. Um that is at zero at the property law, but it's not affecting that.
Right.
Did I, did I answer your question?
Yeah, I was just getting you to be able to say, I guess, that like, of the building, which is the, is actually the uh the driveway with the way from the doctor line, isn't it?
Correct.
But the driveway with the way from the dock to land, isn't it? Or is it one of the buildings right on it and one's?
Yeah, so the way the, the physical property line kind of weighed out. On the south portion, that property line almost runs. Very, very close to that neighboring building. And at that building line, it would be zero foot candles coming from the proposed.
Right.
Yeah, I, could you, could you please confirm? You, you mentioned that there was. Borough has access, has sewer access. It is gonna be covering an area related to sewer access. Could you, could, could you please confirm, is there any conflict between the proposed? Puttings and foundations for this structure and those elements? And with the borough, it needed to be able to access those, those locations?
So, yeah, the, the point Mr. Clerken noted was the. The ladders, so the, the services going to this existing structure, you know. The waters, the water being sort of that. It wouldn't be affecting anything within the borough where, where the borough's makes. If there were any central conflicts or conflicts with the puddings, there would be adjustments within. Our property to the laterals and the services and it wouldn't otherwise affect.
Okay.
And they would still. To the right that they have today to go inspect the services and the models and install.
Okay, so. So you did, when, when you did the design, you did attempt to make sure there was no conflict, conflicts with the foundations? As Beth began.
With not knowing that.
Perfect. And then my next question is. Was the agreement that leads into the question is, I, I didn't realize that, and I want to understand. I want to know whether I understood your, your testimony correctly. I think you said that. The lights, any lights still onto the neighboring property, even though it's owned by the current owner, that's not necessarily guaranteed in the future. I didn't realize that the light spill can also be incorporated into easements. Is that what you were saying? Like a permanent easement in, in purpose? I didn't quite understand that.
Yeah, no, it was more a, kind of a plaza planning argument on it.
Okay.
They're proposing a shared parking and access agreement with lot fifteen, which is currently owned. So what I'm, what I was trying to explain or what I was, was saying is that. The negative effects of, you know, that potential light spill on lot fifteen is not there in two parts. One, current owner owns that lot, so they have no negative impact. But further, these two properties are always going to be tied together in that the parking and the access is always going to be going through that driveway. So if there's ever a potential sale between the two properties, there's already an agreement in place that. They're tied together and the parking is always going to go in between them. And therefore, a lighting spilling over from that to there, there's really no further network, is what I was trying to find.
Okay, so you weren't, you weren't suggesting there was any kind of legal connection?
No, no, other than.
Thank you.
Yep.
That's it.
Yeah, one more question I wanted. They're all, these are all from when the, of the plan here, obviously when the awning is open, right?
It's, it's, it's when it's fully extended, when the awning would be otherwise closed, all the lights are brought up to the center. And then this is basically worst case scenario spill.
And I would assume they're only on during, I guess, operating hour.
Perfect.
One more on lighting. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I just didn't make sure I got this right. The, because there are apartments on the second floor in the property to the north, I know it's common ownership right now, this is down the road, it's not. Testimony is that there is no spill. By the time you reach those apartments in the buildings is orders. It's on the, and they're on the second floor. This is a ground, as a barber shop right, this ground I will reach up. The testimony that the lighting, because of where it's located and its directionality is pointing down into the patio area. And we're not just being spillover up to the second floor.
It's so. I want to be careful how I answer this.
Okay.
At the ground level, where you're measuring the spillage.
Right.
There would, what is being shown is right there. There's not to say that there's not going to be potentially glare coming through the wind, the, the window structure. That somebody looking out their window on the second floor cannot see that. That is, you know.
Well, clearly they're gonna see diners having dinner out their window, just like they do now. It's, that's, that, I'm not, I'm not worried about that. I, I'm worried about tenants who doesn't have property rights on the second floor apartment of that building, having something pointing at them. As opposed to a diffuse light, which is what your testimony seems to say.
The, the angle of those lights is downward facing. It is not pointed out towards anything opposite. Specifically downward towards our patio interior, but okay. I, I think that's come over to everyone.
Did, I'm sorry, lighting. I want another question. So. He said, so the lighting is underneath the canopy and shines down. And you said when the canopy is. Open, the roof is, is closed, so to speak. That's the, and the lighting plan depicts the greatest potential light spill.
Right.
And I see, I see that when the canopy opens, all of the lights are.
Cordian.
Thank you. I was thinking smushed and like, there's gotta be. Are it's cordian and so. I would presume that you may have that open during night hours, like when it's nice, nice in the summer, but. Is that gonna concentrate the light at the, in the patio such that it's an issue? And are the lights individually controllable so that we don't result in sort of a spotlight at the center of the patio as the lights are cordian? Yeah.
Well, you know what, let's. And all the question, ask it later, because I don't want to, want to keep on with this at the time, just to make it easier for everybody. All right. So no other board questions? Any questions from members of the public? I do see we have a few for the courts online and we've got. Folks in, in person. Yes.
Yes, sir. I guess you're wondering, is. Questions about coloring of a structure for this gentleman or that gentleman?
I think it'd probably be better answered by the next witness. Any other questions? Thank you.
My next, our witness is Mr. Beldner.
Hello, everyone.
And Mr. Beldner, you were here last, and you were sworn in.
Leave it there, it's good.
And did you prepare documents for the board after the last hearing?
Yes.
And can you describe, first of all, let's take one of the. Take some of the. Plans that you provided. You provided a document called Plan Production, Project Production Plan and Section, right?
Yes.
Okay, and what does that show?
I remember the one. You.
This is one of the exhibits.
Yeah, this is, I'm referring to the document called Project Production Plan and Section. Can you just describe what that document shows?
We already have it.
Yeah.
Thank you. Well, thanks.
So this is showing. Front facade of the structure. In the middle, we have the wall. And it's like a bird view, bird looking plan. And these are the window systems. These are motorized windows. These are manual sliding windows at the pass, for the speed side. That's it. We have one. Sorry, we have four independent roof systems. So you can manage them on remote separately. Also, these windows are motorized. You manage them from the remote. The bottom model of these windows are stationary. The other two wings are coming up and down. They are double pane, very well insulated, tempered safety glass. And we pull argon ducts between the panes, so it's more insulated. The roof structure is a PVC membrane fabric, which is first of all non-flammable. And it is reflecting back the UV rays of the sun. So. Because of the energy efficiency. Then you, if you close and you want to heat or cool inside, so. You spend less gas, less electric, so it is nature compatible, is good. All structure, except these main carriers, is aluminum. Average three millimeters thickness aluminum. And we paint all metal structure, all aluminiums, with electricity powder coating. Also, we are using a paint that's nature compatible. Recyclable, so all of the structures, all of the components, elements we use. They're all recyclable. It's costing a lot of money manufactured in that way, but we love to do the best thing. We have to respect the nature. That's it. Well, is, we have a door which is opening outside because of the emergency. Proposes. And it has built-in push bar. These windows are manual sliding, each side depends on the user. And we have a couple fixed stationary laminated, tempered and laminated windows here. They are not opening. These two angles. These ones here too, they are fixed, they are stationary. I say more. The lighting system. We use Samsung brand, best LED in the world. They spent only one point four watts in all day. And you manage them from the remote and they are dimmable. So your question, when you open the roof and all lights will come with the fabric all the way to the middle of the system. So the light cannot, if you dim them down all the way. From the remote, you are not going to have a shine place. And still, they are giving this angle lighting. So it cannot pop up the other sides. So it cannot disturb anyone. Because it's manageable first of all. You can dim them down, dim up. And during the winter, of course, it's gonna be cold and you will close the windows, close the roof and you will have lightning. While we add this specification, dimmable specification. To the lighting system, so you can dim them down and disturb no one. And they are really giving very nice illumination. They are Samsung brand, they are best, because I made a huge, very long search about this LED lighting. But so far, thank God, we, I got a deal with the Samsung engineers. They are manufacturing these lights only for my company, for my systems. We may, lo, lo, last thing. When we design this structure, this owning system, retractable roof and window systems. We try to obey the nature of the town and the design of the building. So they are not going, because my first design was coming towards with the flat roof and. I don't like it in some way. And that's why we divided it into like a building itself. Like it was always there since forever. We tried to give that feeling. And when I look at the other buildings, neighbor buildings. I align the finish of the owning system. At the street side. Same line with the, I believe it is north, right?
South.
South, south building, not the barber shops building. So if you, when I finish the installation, if you go and align your eyes like that, they will, they will look like. Exactly same. We kept it a little high. Normally I don't do that high. But I, we want it to look same aesthetic with the building roof. So that's why T model will more. Aesthetic and will more fit to the building and the town. And first, we, on the renderings, you see it as black, but I made it green actually first. Because we have greens all over, Clementon and rest of the United States. But we change it with multiple, but each town has a color. Some towns has only colors, for example. We can obey that color. Because we have, we can paint more than three hundred different colors. For the last thing. Water drain is so important. I always try to manage rainwater. Not lose it, collect it somewhere else and give it back to the nature. So that's why I made it by myself and Kelly put it in the plan. Yeah, I have bigger one. So again, with the bird view. We are going to install, I'm not going to install it, plumber has to install it. But I will cooperate and manage this installation. We put all over here. Ground rain, ground rains. And this will be connected to the main drain of the. But how it works? So we're seeing. This structure only started. So when it rains. All from the slope, this slope is very well engineered, by the way. It's probably always those kind of stuff. And this slope is much, way much more than it has to be, so it's better. At the front of the awning, we have a huge gutter, building gutter. You don't see it here, but on the renderings, I can show you. Yeah, so from these lines, so. These. Front of the tubular roof system has its own building gutters. And. From these posts, in the middle, we drain them out, drain the water out, okay? So right in front of this drain, drainouts of the system. The water will go inside of the ground drains that we are going to install. That was my last explanation for now.
Okay, and you provided, you have the height of the building, length of the building in your plans. And you also provided a details of the metal construction as well as putting. And then you provided these, these eighteen pages of rendering.
Yes.
And you want to say anything about those, showing what, you have a question about the front of the building, whether that.
So Mr. Dunis asked a question about the window systems. Actually, I have. So Mr. Dennis asked a question about the window systems, actually, I have already explained that, but. Let me explain it again. Who, at the two sites of the. So. At the neighbor sites, the other building sites of the project. We will install motorized window. Alright, but at the front, at the street side, we have sliding manual windows. At the front, inside, I designed these sliding windows. Because I don't want it to be seen from the outside like we block something over there. So these window system almost has no frame, so it will look like. Clear glass like, there is no glass. We, we, I believe we show it here, yes. So. One, two, yeah, this is the third page. And fifth page also, you can see. So if you see this. First rendering. When you slide those windows, for example, this side, we have four wings of glass. The other side, we will have six wings of glass. So when you slide them, they behave like single window. Because we slide them in the same track. If you go in next page, you will see. From the inside perspective. And then, this is five, not four, alright. Six page, seven pages showing, but I want to show you the closed scene of the sliding windows. Eleventh page. Page eleven, page twelve. So when you slide and close all sliding windows, you will see very tiny profiles. Because I don't want to kill the design of the main building too, that's also important. And the side windows, they are, we call that panoramic window, because when you sit. On your chair, the view of your eyes never being colored. Because of the size of the middle window. So I leave, I answered Mr. Dennis's question. If you have any question, please just ask me.
I, I don't have any further questions.
Okay, so let me make sure, I'm a professional.
Yes, Dennis, Mr. Dennis, could you see what he was pointing to to answer your question?
You know, we, we can't, I can't see anything that they're showing, but I, I looked on the document that we had and I could see. The pictures that we were sent, but we can never see anything that's being presented.
I understand, I just wanna make sure that you.
Yeah, I got it, thank you, I did, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So let me, let me start, Jay, any questions? I don't think so, but I just can check.
No questions, thank you.
Alright, Bob, any questions?
Just more curiosity, the accordion, as was described, shape awning. When that's open to the center, it's not functional, is it, is it glass panels on the roof or it's just open to the air?
No.
So that, that, that awning is in fact your roof, but just a retractable roof essentially?
Yes, of course, it's motorized, we do use Sony automation, they are approved in North America, best company in.
So if you're heating or cooling the space, that would be closed?
Of course, yeah. So, for example, now this is an open scene in the first part. Rain starts easily, push the button in thirty seconds, everything will be closed. Or in summer time. You have sun, nice weather, or summer night, you push the button, open everything. So, the, the main goal of my systems. Is not to lose the feeling of being outdoors at the patio. If you do fixed stationary roof, fixing those, it will be inherited, like this building. So we are not letting people, I do residential too, not only commercials. So when you need to reach up sky, where the sun, you push button, you open everything. And it's like nothing over there almost, because we are giving almost eighty percent of projection. With windows and roof system. So you are still at outdoors. You don't let your heart, soul.
Got a few questions. Alright, so I'm gonna go to board members, I know, I'm sorry.
Clarify for the record, so the height of the building, Robin, you had touched on this. Just to translate the centimeters on the plans into height, is it seventeen feet, I've got seventeen feet, two point nine, two point six nine three inches? Is that about right? Kelly, was that on your plans?
I don't quite specifically online.
Only because the permitted height is eighteen feet.
I have to say, all these years on the planning, whatever, never has to do a metric conversion.
Thank God for that.
I will tell you in one sentence. Seventeen foot. Two inches. And I don't know who is some, almost three inches, like. Two inches and three quarters.
Okay, so, so maybe, so right, but I, I would say for the sake of. Testimony, maybe we wanna say, put in the record, the metric number, approximately seventeen foot three inches, let's round up. And we're eighteen is permitted or whatever the number is.
But I have to tell it something.
Alright, so let me ask members of the board with questions. Dennis had a question that I think we're addressing, did you, did you any further or are you good?
I, I don't have any other questions.
Okay, good, anyone else online with questions for this witness? No, no, no?
No, I did not.
Good, good, alright, so sorry, this is on this side, Ryan, good questions.
I have, you, trying to understand, so when, if everything is open. What exactly is there? Like what does the frame look like? It's the outside frame and then a center bar and two bars on the side of the roof?
We can see it from the renderings actually. For example, these ones are, are the runs, rails which are carrying the system. The roof system back and forth. When you totally open in the scene, or let's find this one, the turn one is. Page three. As you see, when you open all windows and all, everything is open, you only see metal structure.
Okay.
And this project is high, for example, if you want, when you look at the sky. And you see, you will see aluminum profiles, the runners. And the dimension of the runners are. Five by six inches. So. Smaller than that triangle. And they will be minimum per king feet high, so. Almost, there is nothing that's right.
Does the glass actually come out?
No.
So.
They are working in the same track like that, they are not extensionally going somewhere else. Or refracting inside, folding inside, they are working inside of the frame of the diagonal roof system.
They go up and down?
Up and down, yes, up and down. And we install all windows between the frame of the diagonal roof system. Between the posts areas of the diagonal roof system.
And do they lock?
Yes, the manual sliding windows and door has of course key, lock.
But they lock it, but when they're, when you, when they're closed, they kind of like lock in place?
It has a motor inside, so. It's impossible for to open them without any remote.
And the same thing with the roof, when it is extended out?
No one can, no one can open that. By human power, these motorized windows and these motorized roof systems cannot be openable.
So.
It's impossible.
Okay, so not by human power, so let's talk like, if the roof is closed, what kind of snow load does it have? The, if the owners are away on vacation, are they leaving it open? Or are they gonna close it and worry about snow load?
Actually, I can answer this question with my experience, if you guys trust my word. In my contract, I am giving one foot.
For snow, okay.
Okay? But by myself, because I did plant of projects. By myself, I saw nine foot snow on my systems. And with longer projection and wider widths.
What do you recommend though? Do you recommend they have it open in the wintertime and, or?
They can, they can use this roof system, any kind of snow, it's not going to affect anything. Because. The main carriers, sorry, these runners which are carrying the roof system. We are. Apply a special heating process, so they are being more strong against the load. I am two hundred pounds and during the installation, I am walking on that roof. And snow itself is not important. When it turns to ice is important. And let's say we have three foot snow on top of roof, okay? It can turn, starting from the, all over the fabric, it can turn couple inches of ice. And when it turns to ice, then ski is getting hard. So this can give a problem, as, but as long as the user not try to open it, nothing will happen. Because when we calculate, when we engineer. Every project, because every project is custom, nothing is similar, only outlook, design kind of similar. You see, this is one module of owning, it has one, two, three rails. We calculate the distance between two rails. Depends on the result, we are making them wider or more narrow because of the snow load. But nothing gonna happen, as long as we don't have fifteen foot snow, I never experienced that. And thank God, the United States is a very beautiful country with every single thing. Fifteen days before, we know the wizard and we can, all news are saying us. And I'm sending text messages to my clients, because I am very sensitive on that. I'm telling them, be careful, you know, don't try to open and close, when you have, that is dangerous.
But if you know a blifter is coming, you recommend that they open it so that the snow just comes down?
It depends on the, if it is more than five, six foot snow, I'm telling my clients, keep it open, you know? Let the snow down and then clean up the snow and then use it, but nothing will happen.
So.
It's so strong.
Let's talk about wind then, because we've had some really, the last couple of years, can we just?
Can the applicant just, I think, answering your question about the applicant not being there? Can the applicant?
He's always there, I know.
Although, but if they're not, I think he wants to do.
Basically, yeah, basically, so we are, when we are there, so it's gonna be closed. But we are not there, so we're gonna open up and then in case of snow or anything.
So you are gonna just leave it open, disappear? Okay, so can we talk about the wind, like, like what strength this has to withstand, you know, the sixty, sixty-five mile an hour wind? We've been experiencing the last few years.
I'm giving ninety kilometers per hour.
Okay, we have a little failure of the metric system in this country. So.
In main street, are you having winds more than seventy miles per hour?
I have, we, we have.
Um, yeah, on a certain occasion.
Recently, and we have, we are in a, we are in a prime zone for hurricane winds of Cat Three, it is a hundred and fifteen, like. I, I, we, it is not, it has gotten worse and there's no, we have the, it's a legitimate.
This project, we will have window systems, so a hurricane, it is not. I'm former Marine, so I know what's hurricane. If it is not numbers nine, ten, eleven, this, my system cannot fly anywhere. Because we have a strong glass system. There is nothing for a strong wind to hold it and throw it somewhere else.
What's the impact resistance on the glass? Like if, if, I mean, I have to say this, right, but, but the question is, we've had in windstorms, things like. Barbecue grills can pitch up and run around, like is that a, what's, what's the rating on the, is it, it's safety glasses, but what's the, what's the safety?
There is no rating on that, you never know, I don't know.
The glass, the glass, I guess, pardon my question, the glass isn't gonna come out?
It's, it's a double pane glass, so tempered glass can, can easily be broken if you hit it on the side.
Right.
But there is nothing on the side, you cannot, because it's closed. If it has impact like that, it's double pane, the first pane will be.
But then.
Will turn to salt, but the second pane will stay there.
Anybody's window can break if something hits it, I'm more concerned that the windows can come out.
No.
The windows are not gonna flood out, that's why I started out, I asked you about how they're locked in place. Um, okay.
The thing is, the safety about the system is these footings. These footings. And I will do that. These footings has to be solid, strong concrete. And when we install them, we install them very, very strong anchor bolts and liquid concretes again. Because we make holes to mount them to the ground. So this is extremely important, most important part. The other connections of the system, they are already so strong. Because when you finish the installation, the whole load is spreading everywhere. I'm not an engineer, but I know my business very well, I'm so experienced. And I did, I'm doing this, I just finished installation at the roof of Manhattan. You cannot leave it in it over there. So I cannot let this system fly somewhere else, you know, it's impossible. I, I, in this country, I don't have a wind test. Because every single state, sometimes towns in the same state, they're asking different kind of regulations. But in Europe, we used to have some wind test, laboratories, some universities, but they don't accept them here.
How is that the hot bar that has, that holds the cordyne, like and everything, how is that attached to the frame?
The, actually, is that. This is the metal construction project, so all these, right in the middle of the system, this is. All iron, not aluminum, it's totally iron. And. These, these are main carriers, I made a Caesar's metal construction here, because I didn't want to put a beam right in the middle of patio. It would be very ugly. So this is a very well calculated, very strong iron metal construction. And all the rest, they are all aluminum. The heaviest part of the system is that because of the safety concerns. And these, for example, bases of these, this is bird view, top view. And these, for example, bases of these, cause this is bird view, top view. The bases of these posts are bigger than the uh parable roofs posts, post actually. We have a very strong base, so this, when first we will install this uh. Main carrier structure, metal construction, and then we will start connecting. Uh the roof system, future roof system, this middle uh metal construction.
Is it welded? Is it?
No, there is no weld. They are all welded and uh screwed. Because we cannot trust welding uh for these kind of systems.
Okay, I'm done. Thank you.
I, I do, I just wanna put on the record that the front doors are ADA compliant. Yes. Okay, and my second question, the last time you were here, uh Mr. Belger, you uh, you took great care in explaining how this structure was actually. Uh attached, affixed to the building, so you could heat it and um and air condition, so. It can you, you don't have to go into great detail, but I'm just curious, because this structure seems to be aligning with the windows. Not the bricks, so is there some system that gets put in between the, the steel beam? And the window that keeps it insulated?
Uh are you asking the connection between the existing building?
Correct.
Future?
Correct.
Okay, so we, we plan the future roof, exactly same height?
Yes.
And we will insulate the gap between the existing uh buildings. And the future roof system with some spatial insulations that I don't wanna.
Okay, I, I know, I'm sorry. I, I was specifically referring to um as the vertical, verticals come down, according to the drawings. It appears that the verticals come down and overlap the existing window.
Yes, I know, let me tell you this, uh these. These two posts, this is generally, these two posts will be in front of the windows. But I cannot tell you this, because I will locate them here at the job site during the installation with distance. So I will make a composite uh sheets, very nice design composite sheets. And I will make paint them and I, I will put insulation enough. I will connect them just side of the window.
Okay, so there, so you can maintain your uh the, the great insulation on the.
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you, thank you. Oh, and one more question, I know that when you're here last, we, we did talk a lot, and I know you have three hundred colors. I think the board really preferred black at the time, so when you, these drawings, these are black.
Yes, multiple.
The color is match.
Multiple.
Perfect, thank you.
The uh roof of color is gray.
Okay, yeah, um, uh yeah, I do a couple of questions. I'm gonna continue with um. Uh the subject that Todd just asked, uh going back to our previous meeting. Um in addition to insulation between the new frame building and the existing facade. Will there be any flashing above to divert water?
Yes.
From the owner? Good answer. The um, the next question, I have also feedbacks on Todd. I had a question whether the, the um uh roof was white or gray, you answered gray. Um how do you clean um them? Are they um? Uh you know, power wash when, when things get dirty?
Uh from interior, from interior, hot water, soap and dry cloth.
What about the outside?
Outside you uh collect some dust, uh this is nano technology, probably is not collecting dust easily. But you can easily power wash it or, you know.
It's like staining.
Yeah, very brushy.
Leaves and stuff like that.
Birds only will see this part.
Well, no, I mean, I think um the, the roof will be seen coming up down, up down the street, so I'll get through that, but I'm sure that this um. Owner who's very well respected is gonna keep it, uh keep it looking great. That's all I need to know was how does it get cleaned? Then finally, the, the, the little bit of confusion related to your snow and wind ropes. You have, have you ever installed one of these facilities in New Jersey?
Yes.
Okay, when you submitted your um uh. Uh application for building permit in the state of New Jersey, you had to meet. Um and prove that you could meet both snow and minload requirements for the NJUCC, the New Jersey edition of. Of the Uniform Building Code. Now, I'm asking you, did you have to submit that when you?
No, I just uh like three months ago. Uh I got a meeting like that, a testimony at uh Cape May.
Okay.
And I am building uh this four size bigger than this project.
Uh huh.
Right in front of the beach.
Have you pulled, pulled your permit yet for that project?
Yes.
Okay.
They pulled it, I did not.
When, when they pulled the permit, they had to fill out the, the uniform um construction.
I don't know, I don't know what to do.
So, but you as the manufacturer must have, have um uh provided. The um, the, the people that pulled the permit, whether it was you or, or, or representative of the owner. They had to submit some sort of load um uh ability of your structure.
Uh huh.
Um you, you did mention your structure was tested. Your, your, you, you did mention your structure was tested over in Europe, so you do have some idea of the weights and the winds that it can. Um uh handle. The, the New Jersey Uniform Construction Code for this area. Is actually ninety miles per hour for this area and um it, it can get higher than that, but that's the, that's the code is based on. I, I'm not gonna be able to remember the exact snow load at this point, but you wouldn't have been able to pull a bu- building permit. Without being able to give that information, so I guess my question is, are you prepared to be able to provide? Our local, and you're, you're, you're shaking your head, Beth, because you know where I'm going with this, are you, are you?
Yeah.
Are you prepared to provide our local um uh construction code official? The information that he would need in order to confirm that your structure meets. Um the New Jersey Uniform Construction Code for both wind and snow loads, and I can tell you. It's gonna meet it, but that's, I, I can see that from the type of construction you're doing, so I think it's just a matter of. Are you confident that you have the ability to prove that before you pull permit?
With my skills and with my words, yes, but not on the paper work. There is no company in the United States.
Yes. We could, we could definitely. Yeah, please, thank you.
Yes.
Let's, let's, let's make that a condition of approval, and I'm sure, but we'll figure it out. And he's a very smart man and, and I'm have, I have no doubt that he'll be able to figure that out. Um let me just make sure that I don't have any other questions. Um. I got them all, and for this, for this witness, thank you.
Karen, please.
Um yeah, I do, um it's coming back to something which was mentioned earlier about a man's heart as well, but the, the anchor, the. We talked about the slow load, the snow load and the, the dead weight, the, the, when it's sitting and it's finished, right? I also want to ask about your anchors when you're connecting to your footings. Um because what have they been designed for? And I'm specifically wanting to ask, it might need to go back to the engineer. Your worst case scenario is uplift, when the sidewalk, sides are open and the roof is closed. And you could possibly get uplift, so I, I don't see anything on the bolts or the anchors that, and, and the requirements for those based on your. It's basically gonna become a sail and could lift up. It might, probably won't, but you should be able to provide those. He's shaking his head, but you should be able to provide a basic level of bolt that isn't gonna shear up in the wind, okay? So I'd like to see those um or give testimony in those, because I'm particularly worried this might, you think that might not happen, this scenario, but I. Do we have any, do you have a construction installation procedure that you're going to follow? Because if you put the roof on first, before the side wind goes down, this could definitely, this could very, very likely happen. If the, whatever wind situation can, I know in normal use, from your testimony, you're generally gonna leave it closed. Or you're gonna leave it open for snow dropping in, but there could be a scenario where this could happen and that could be a concern. Do we have any testimony?
Are you asking me or are you asking?
It goes to each, which one of you wishes to answer, which one can answer at this moment?
I think what Karen's asking is, do you have a, um a, a written um installation? Um uh not manual, but.
Scheme, schema, what, what are you gonna do?
This is what you do, step one, step two, step three. Yeah, specification.
Right.
Do you, do you have something like that? And the, the, and, and, and the distance, the anchors that she's concerned about. Every anchor company provides their strength in their, in their manufacturing specifications. I think it's just a matter of you making sure that that's submitted to the building inspection, they have the construction codex.
Well, I'd like to know, I'd like to know that somebody is, runs them, it's quite simple job to put numbers based on an uplift. And work out how many bolts you need and do you even have that number of bolts against the wind load?
They're not showing on the canopy detail, or the footing detail now.
Hmm.
But as part of the building permit process, they're gonna review all of the structural analysis. And if there's any requirement to add additional bolts, we would certainly add.
Okay.
That satisfies that, right?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure that everyone's testimony that you've thought that. Do you want to go sailing off that mainstream?
Other question? Do you have any other question?
No, I don't, sorry, I didn't mean to end on.
Okay, um I do not, I do not have any questions. Uh are there questions uh from members of the public uh for this witness? Were you gonna ask about the color or you got your answer?
Well, he said it can come in three hundred colors, so um at the end, the public without the opportunity to make comment.
Absolutely.
So, okay, and, and the owner said that when the business is not operational. The uh roof will be closed up like.
It's open seat.
It, well, yeah, it's only open.
The way open, so it's, is.
The accordion. The accordion stuff will be up here.
Yes.
If, can you clarify that, was that just the wind, there's a possible snow emergency, because I wouldn't thought you would want to do that every single day? Because all your, all your tables are gonna get wet if it rains while you're not there, right? So is, can you clarify that the concern was keeping it open? Just, I'm, I'm thinking along with, I want it closed, the roof is open, when there's a snow emergency might happen, so that the snow won't affect the roof. But in the general use, you'll probably keep it closed, the roof, the roof, I'm not incorrect.
It depends, I mean, if it's raining, so we'll keep it all, we will keep it closed because of the rain, so if you don't wanna get people wet. But if it's a nice day, so we'll give it open, so.
Right, at the open most.
So, so we have testimony from the owner that when there is potential for snow or ice or other severe weather. The accordion will be smushed.
Yeah.
So it's, you're willing to wait um no problems, right? Okay, got it.
No ice, it's severe weather.
Severe weather. Yeah, good.
Yeah.
Smush.
I do have one question, I was George Fleming then, uh in the pictures, there's greenery shown in front. And I want to know, I don't know who answers that question.
And it's you, this photo she rendered to me?
Um yes, I will. Page six is a good.
So in the rendering, it appears that there is some shrubs on the rendering in front of the knee wall, between the knee wall and the sidewalk. But if you look at the photo of existing conditions, the foot wall is at the sidewalk line and there is no.
Actually, it's a render only.
So, so you're, there's, is your, so the question is, are you proposing, you are not proposing vegetation install?
We are not proposing uh uh grass or, actually, I, I did not propose any grass over there. Only we put this, we're gonna put green over there for renders only.
Because it makes it look nice.
Ah, thank you very much. I'm not feature. Actually, I.
So the question, so like just to keep this a little bit. Um from, from the engineer, I just wanna be sure that there is, that there is not plantings proposed. In the space between the knee wall and the side. But the rendering is an artistic interpretation and not an actual proposal.
Correct. There is an existing, very, very, very small grass strip between the sidewalk and the curb line.
Yes.
And that's maybe what is showing up in the rendering, but there's no additional.
But, but the owner, what did you say about?
The, the which one?
So, so you know what, we're gonna, he's, he's gonna testify. Alright, good. So it is, it is nine o'clock, or actually, it's nine oh six, we usually take a break around this time. Um are, are you gonna call another witness or no?
Um I'm, I can, I guess I can, wanna ask Adrian any questions?
I don't, I think we're actually fine.
Okay.
Um I, I just, so let's, let's, let's take a break here, uh just a quick five minute break here, and then when we come back, we'll have. Um any closing statement that you might wanna make, and maybe if you could summarize. Um we release it's being requested, um public comments, and then we'll go to board discussion, so let's take five minutes. I'm gonna pause the recording. You're back from our break, I mean, if you could, please just call the roles, make sure everyone's here.
Here, Kara, here, Miss Hengelmar, here, Mr. Champion.
Mike, are you back?
Move on, Mr. Basha?
Here.
Mr. Levitt?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Miss Giffen?
Yeah.
Mike, are you back?
Yes.
Thank you.
Here.
Mr. Samino?
Here.
Mr. Show?
Here.
Mr. Whitehead? Mr. Echo?
Here.
Miss Kaczynski?
Yeah.
Mr. Lurica?
Here.
Mr. McManus?
Yeah.
Mr. Captain?
Here.
Okay, so um any closing remarks?
Um we just think the board should approve uh this project, the correct for site plan approval. Uh the variance, uh front yard setback, it's uh four point two two from the setback where nineteen point twenty-five is required. Um but that's an existing condition, um the patio is already going into setback uh for impervious. Uh the board requires point seven five, this is point nine four three two, um again, that's an existing condition, uh they're not worsening the condition. Um I think that this project really um supports the borough's vision for Main Street. Um I, I know the board is looking for active uses on Main Street, it wants restaurants, it wants street life, it wants people. Walking around, it looks like a Somerville type of a um environment, and I think that this really promotes that and supports it. So I, I think it supports your zone plan, uh the vision for the downtown business district, it's a good business owner, he's responsible business owner. Um the structure is going to be well made, um you know, testimony that it's on our rooftop of Manhattan's. Um it's gonna have footings, uh such as like a block on it, that's gonna exteriorate, it's gonna be well constructed. Um and we think it's gonna enhance, uh obviously enhance our client's business by allowing him remain open perhaps a little longer to see them on rainy days. And it's gonna help the town by promoting business, um and seeing people eating. Uh in this last structure will also, I think, help the environment of the town, so. Um we think that this is a good proposal, any kind of conditions uh that the board requires, that we use to alleviate anything that board base is required. Uh we would provide a cross access easement to deal with the parking and uh submitted to the board attorney for her approval. And so with that, um uh we ask the board to uh to vote in favor of this son of a patient.
Thank you. Um so now it's time for any members of the public who wish to make a comment um on this application. Um our board rules is uh for uh up to three minutes, um anyone in person, raise your hand.
The only comment I have is, I know, I was just told that you've already indicated you want black. If you look at the renderings and the relationship for the adjoining properties, and you think about Main Street. Black is very. It sticks out like a sore thumb if you look at the other buildings, and if you look. There's gray popping from the red brick wall, and this roof is gray, I'm just wondering. And I spoke to the owner and he. And this roof is gray, I'm just wondering, and I spoke to the owner, and he doesn't care if it's gray, there would just be a, a less jarring visual thing if it were not black. And so I ask for your reconsideration.
Thank you. Uh, any members, there's no one else in the public here, any members online who's just speak on, uh, raise hand?
Hey, seeing none, I need a motion to close the public hearing, so then we can move to board.
Have a second?
Yes, I'm.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Giffen?
Yes.
Mayor Carol?
Yeah.
Mrs. Englander?
Yes.
Ms. Champion?
Yes.
Mr. Basna?
Yes.
Mr. Levitt?
Yeah.
Ms. Whitesman?
Yes.
And Mr. Samina?
Yes. Okay, so now it's time for a board discussion, I asked our board's professionals if there's anything in summary um that you want, uh, uh, in addition to what's been already been talked about, if there's anything um that you wanted to add. Um, Jay, I'm gonna start with you, is your remote?
Yes, um, I think the parking will continue to function as it does today, and I just had one signage comment that did not get picked up in the revised plan. Um, a do not enter sign facing Main Street on the back of the proposed stop signs, the post is already there, we just wanna do not enter facing out to main on that exit only driveway. That's it.
Seems like a reasonable condition, thanks Jay, um, Bob, is there anything you wanted to add?
No, not to go away, I say, whatever you think.
Beth, if you could just make sure if you would, for us, summarize the finding, the leaf sawed, if there's anything you need to pay attention to.
Sure, I would be important, so, yeah, so, let's see. So, we have, uh, I think the uh most important item of notice of front yard setback variance, they come in at two point seven feet originally. Um, but what we heard this evening was that their new canopy design, they've actually moved the front of the canopy structure further from the street. So, they're moving towards compliance, it's, it's found from two point seven to four point two, so it's not um, at, you know, I don't wanna say it's really significant, but it is moving towards compliance and there's no way to um to interpret it otherwise, so I think that's a, that's a positive change that we've seen over the last couple of hearings. Um, they have other uh existing non-conformities that it, that exist on the property, but those are not proposed to be altered as a result of this application, so for example, uh, the existing purpose cover is uh nine point or point nine, uh, ninety-four percent. Um, and the side direct setback is at five point four feet, which is not a change by that. So ultimately, what we have here is a, a front yard setback, which is uh is, I should also cite, uh, existing is thirty-one point seven five feet, not the same knee wall that exists, uh, that's at approximately two point seven feet. But now they're proposing four point two for the front canopy structure. Uh, we have existing conditions, non-conformities, and others than that, it's set planable.
Karen, anything else you need to add?
Uh, not other than condition, condition, number four is sorry.
Okay, so let's, let's start with, um, any members of the board, any questions for our professionals or any, uh, us concerned clarification?
I do, there, there's no relief from lighting, you know, when we're back.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yes, there, thank you, um, I just, I'm putting my own table, there is a lighting relief, they see the uh, uh, the organs which require us more uh lighting beyond the property boundaries. Um, and are, uh, and so we have a lighting variance, uh, that's been requested, uh, the four shells.
The variant, there was a relief in design standard.
That is, yeah. Yeah, that's in your.
Any other questions for the professionals, for members of the board, anyone remote with questions? Anyone here with questions? Okay, so, um, time for board discussion, does anyone want to, I'm gonna start, I'm gonna start in person, I'm gonna start over here with Karen, because.
It's because, um, no, the only thing I wanna say is, the rest of the board will echo this, but thank you to the applicant, the, um, the revised design, and that you prefer them in the application, listen to everything we said. And, and I, I think it's really good, you know, I think you've come up with a really good solution for this space. And I thank you for all your work to do that, to achieve that, and you guys did all our questions. Um, no, I don't have anything further left, that's all.
Susan, everything?
Um, I'm gonna echo everything that Karen just said. You did a great job, um, and listened to us for the first time, and came back and hit it all. I wanna expand on what she said with um one particular item, and that is the facade alignment. That's a very subtle thing that we didn't discuss, and uh we, we discussed the last time, and I was very impressed that you picked it up, because not many applicants do. Aligning the facade with one or the other um side of the property is something that we incorporated into the two thousand fifteen master plan, and then actually felt that it wasn't clear enough and revised it in this recent master plan, just to make it clearer, because the verbiage wasn't clear, but the intention was that there to, there's to be a rhythm along any street in town, but in specifically Main Street, it works well here, and the fact that you cut that back really tells me that you listen, and I really, really appreciate that um for many reasons, so I do wanna note to my fellow um, board members that that is consistent with our, our master plan and um and there's, there's no negative, you know, there's no negative effect there whatsoever. Um, the other thing I did want to mention is, um, don't be afraid after this application is over and after you see your, your beautiful new structure up, hopefully, um, to come back to our signage committee and propose something for the outside, I have a feeling you have that intention eventually, um, Todd and, and the others don't bite, they work, they will work with you and are, are great to work with. Um, I do wanna clarify that, because one of the first things that was said in the architectural um testimony was that um, the, the, the faux roof overhang that was a, this, a, a, a point of discussion the last time, um, that wasn't a historic issue for us, nothing of a sort. Um, the concern was the geometry, and you addressed that with your revisions, I just wanna make that clear. We did not say that was a historic uh issue and a historic element issue, um, and, you know, like I said, it was, it was the proposed geometry and how it interfered and architecturally with that overhang. We knew that it wasn't working, like, it just wasn't gonna line up properly, and you weren't gonna get a good um designer. So, again, what you did is great. Um, I want to mention um the, the black and kind of gray white kind of um um message that's kind of coming through and architecturally, I actually think it, this is an historic building, and there's no, there's no reason why there can't be modern elements along um uh, uh, Main Street, or any, any street for that matter. Um, I think this um pops, it is a commercial establishment, and it is tucked between some residential, so I think it's, it actually works well from a, you know, just from an advertising standpoint, and if it pops, if you come down the street. And I, and I, and I don't mind the, the black and white um motif, or gray and black motif, I should say, it, it, I think it comes off more as white in the, um, in the photographs. Finally, this particular application, and I, this is across the board, I, I'm, I'll mention it, we've mentioned it before, and I know Eileen always offers this to every applicant. But if, or if, um, Beth or anybody else is approached by applicants in the future, please, please, please encourage them to, if it's not a D variance, to come to us as a possibility of a TRC, you know, a temporary review committee first. Because honestly, I think we could have gone, taken care of this in one meeting instead of two and saved you that money, and that's frankly horrible, so, um, please do that, and, you know, in the future, consider doing a, a TRC. Um, I think it'll, it kind of hammers out uh this stuff, but we worked, I think this worked out well, thank you for all the time you, you, you put. Hopefully, we'll all be eaten there this, that.
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that I understood, like, the comment from the public was, um, that, uh, the black actually stood out, but it's actually the opposite, think of when you see a new house with black window frame, and how the windows sort of disappear. This will have the same element, this will disappear, if it was a lighter color, it would stand out like this. So, I am all for black matte, which will give what the public is looking for, um, which is a, a more seamless look and a more invisible look going down Main Street. That's it.
Um, my only comment is I really like, like the design a lot, I think it's very architecturally sensitive, it's way better than the first time. Um, I really appreciate what you did, and I appreciate the business has put the kind of time and thought into it.
Uh, very thorough presentation, and, um, welcome to the floor, thank you.
Uh, any folks online, members of the board wish to make any comments, uh, let me go around the horn, I'll, I'll just call Hannah's, go, no. Uh, Mike, anything?
She actually has a thumbs up.
I'm good.
Mike's good, Don?
I'm good.
Dennis?
I'm good, I liked the design.
James?
I was really impressed by the design, it reminds me of a lot of what I see in Europe, especially Germany and in Prague, I, I thought it was an excellent element for Main Street, love it.
All right, and, uh, I'll just say thank you for, for your time and, uh, coming back, um, and responding to the board um, uh, suggestions from our last hearing, um, and, uh, Ian, for some mushroom radio. So, I, I think we've kind of satisfied for discussion, uh, if you go to the conditions.
Sorry.
Sorry.
It's just coming up this color issue, are we gonna specify the color, or are we gonna leave it to the owner to choose what color he wants?
The, the renderings and the testimony given is that it was matte black, and I think that the board with, uh, the board has been presented an application, and we have to rule on the application in front of us. So, what is, what, we're gonna talk about conditions, but I think that we've, we have, we have an application in front of us, matte black, and we just vote on that.
Right, because we, so we don't have any, we don't have any complaint about black, so we were mentioning it, we just say.
It feels, it feels like from the plurality of the board is that there's not enough actions for black.
Okay, I get it.
I think we just reference the aesthetics of the renderings, and it must look in that family, you know? Whether, whether the paint color is called matte black or not, doesn't really matter, it needs to kind of look like that.
Right, okay.
All right, Karen, if you can run through conditions.
Okay, so why don't we start with that one? Um, in compliance with the testimony and the exhibits presented to the board, the aluminum will have a matte black light color. Um, the roof will be contracted when there is any potential for snow and ice or severe weather. Uh, the conditions and comments of the planner's letter will be complied with as well as the engine, as well as the traffic engineer's letter, including item number three on uh, item number three in the traffic engineer's letter. And as usual, we also would like the applicant to comply with the comments within the board engineer's letter, however, there are two items that the applicant indicated that it would like the board to consider not imposing on this application. Uh, the first one was uh item number five, uh, which is to re-cave uh, the portions of the adjacent property that were in poor condition, uh, or at least I had a note from the last meeting, at least the first twenty-five feet. Uh, and then item number six, which talked about the exterior lighting uh, and the comment by the board engineer with regard to that is, issue. So, that's something that the board needs to think about and, and give some direction as far as their condition. Um, the applicant already agreed to shared parking agreements and easements as necessary, they will be presented to us for review and reporting. Um, the proposed fence will be consistent with the existing fence, so there'll be a notation on the plans to reflect that. Uh, the lighting will be three thousand pelvis, and the application and the, will be subject to building code and UCC review and client's approval uh, for everything, including wind and snow loads. And this is in addition to our standard conditions, again, with regards to the fact the applicant is bound by all testimony presented and plans presented to the board, um, escrow conditions, um, et cetera, et cetera.
So, let's have, we can have some discussion on the board about those two items of Bob's letter, about the paving and about the lighting, um, which are existing conditions that are not yeah, so, well, we've talked about it, so, is there, is there thoughts from members of the board?
My thought is, once he gets a lot of hope and, and needs, and makes some more money than make this parking lot, but to ask him to do it now, I think it's just overkill. It's like, oh my God, this is gonna be so pretty on Main Street, and I get the fact I parked in that parking lot before, sooner or later, they'll repay the parking lot, but I wouldn't require it.
Yeah, the parking lot's rugged, but it's not dangerous.
Hmm.
So, so there seems to be general consensus not to impose five in Bob's letter?
Yeah.
Okay, what about the lighting? The, the existing non-conforming lighting in the adjacent parking lot, which is part of the site plan, but it's not on the subject property?
What is non-conformal about it? Can you just remind me?
So, I, I'll read six, the existing exterior lighting on the property in question or the adjoining lot fifteen only consists of a few non-conforming building and pole mounted floodlights. Since the existing expanded restaurant will require night use of the parking lots, the plan should identify the location and coverage of the current lighting, which I believe it does, and the applicant and board should consider if upgrades to the current lighting are warranted.
Again, I think that's a, it's a tough point, that if, that could come as part of a refurbishment of a lot, lot, parking lot as a whole, if you, if the applicant choose to do so in the future.
And they use it at night now?
Yes.
Basically, this, this, this square footage they use now at night, so it's not like there's gonna be more people using this area at night and traversing through the parking lot.
Okay, so I'm seeing consensus also not to impose six, okay, so.
So, then that condition would be compliance with the engineer's letter, except as already has been provided on the revised plans, and with the exception of items number five and six on page four.
Yep. So, what I'm looking for now is a motion and a second to grant site plan approval, subject to the conditions that are just.
Did I, did I hear, did I miss a condition about, uh, um, coordinating with?
Local, you missed it, it was.
It was in there, I mean, I thought, I might have.
You said, uh, code and UCC.
No, 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 that's not the one I'm talking about, I'm talking about the sewer and water, for the town.
That's part of, uh.
Bob's letter.
Okay, that's, that we can incorporate in there, okay, that's one, that's the one I was.
And, and Karen, can we, when, since we're taking the time to reference the color, I also wanna reference the glass, we didn't get any testimony on glass tinting or otherwise. I don't want, I don't need it, but I, just to, to appear as it does in the rendering.
Yes. And we will have a general condition to that effect.
Yeah.
Um, that is in compliance with what's been presented, but with, to the board with regard to renderings, the only one of the reasons I wanted to call that out specifically is because there was not only testimony that this is what they were presenting, but there was also testimony that there were three hundred color options. So, I figured, let's just tie that up in a nice little bow, if that's the way the board would, would prefer that the applicant address it.
So, do you have a motion and a second?
Move, champion.
Champion move. Is there, uh, any further discussion?
I have one question on the vote.
Yes.
Um, when looking back at the minutes, Hannah was not present at the November fifteenth. I just wanna ask Hannah, if she had a chance to review the recording.
She is not, so Hannah's not eligible to vote.
Okay, so I have Mayor Carol, Mrs. Englander, uh, Champion, Basna Levitt, Cook, Giffen, and Mr. Samino. Um, I, I guess my other question is for anybody else, uh, for Dennis, or James, or Don, if they reviewed, uh, because that's eight.
I have.
Okay.
So, did Donald does not, um, Dennis, have you reviewed the reporting or no?
Have.
Dennis has.
Dennis has, okay.
Okay, and, I'm sorry, Don, you did or did not?
I did.
Oh, you did.
Well, we're at nine oh.
Or we would be at the minimum, so.
So, Dennis is, Dennis is the next to the ultimate list, right? So, Dennis gets us to nine, okay, good.
All right, thank you very much.
Good, all right, so I have a motion, I have a second, is there any further discussion?
Mr. Champion?
Yes.
Ms. Giffen?
Yes.
Mayor Carol?
Yes.
Mrs. Englander?
Yes.
Sebastian? Mr. Levitt?
Yes.
It's a cook.
Yes.
Ms. Samino?
Yes.
Ms. Shon?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. All right, um, we are, our, our next, um,
Thank you.
Thank you guys so much.
You have a half a minute for a reset.
It was under your, your final second. Yes.
All right, so our next item on the agenda is chair items. Um, I've got a few things, um, I just wanted to make mention of their chair items, um, and then we've got bill with the. And then we've got Bill with the best one of course. So our next meeting is on the fourteenth. We have table. It is Valentine's Day, yes. It's so someone wants to bring whatever. Bring whatever. Yeah, we know we will have.
We have the resolution.
Resolution for this possibly.
We have two.
Put it on there. We have the two word.
Use your resume.
We've got the two. We anticipate two organizations from. From Capitol, right, on the. All right, so we'll check that. Are we delete completeness for Spice Factory?
Yes.
That's the next, right? We're ready for that on the fourteen?
Yes, Bob's issue is.
Right, so so we've got that report.
And HPC should be.
Yeah, so HPC, we already heard is just make sure HPC knows, Dennis, that. We are going to have the start, well, it's completeness. So we don't have a public hearing yet, so.
Right.
We're not, we don't need to hear from HPCs even though it's before the public hearing, but. Just so you know that that's coming. And then are there other applications that are out there? We know of.
Not that I know of.
Okay, and Beth, Bob, I haven't heard from anybody else. It's kind of percolating. No, okay. Good, so. Like I don't want to, I'm going to do things a little bit. I don't think it's out of order, but I kind of want. I asked both Beth and Kara to do something under their professional reports that's going to. Generate some possible chair item type discussion. So I'm going to, when we get to those, I'm going to talk about what they're talking about, because I don't need to be cryptic about it. It's just that I'm going to let them explain it. It's easier. So there might be a couple of other things, Chair, there. Trent, did you have anything that you wanted to share in the chair items?
No.
Okay. Let's go to the, let's go to the bills. Those were circulated before the meeting. I got a motion to. The bills, yeah. Those are second.
Karen has a question.
I'm sorry.
I have a little thing that I thought could go in the chair items. I was just thinking about my iPad that I have. I'm thinking that some members who are not on the board had iPads signed. Do we do a formal thing to collect them back and give them?
We should have. Yeah, yeah, some some of my trophies should have should have gotten surrendered from former board, former board member, council members, the old iPads, and then a new vote should get them. So that's that's usually.
I know that Brian has turned his in. That was.
Brian turned in a while ago. Susan kept hers. Karen has, Karen and Jim kept theirs, right?
Tony would have kept it. Tony would have kept it.
Tony's had to. So if you're, so so let's check if we.
Just Jim and Karen continued on the board.
Yeah.
Yep, right, yep.
So do you want me to contact?
Yeah.
Bill Hanson, see what's going on. We'll just make sure that. Not as well as if there's any.
Be reassessed.
Right, and I don't know how many of the borough bought back when we were doing remote. So if there's. So if there's, you know, first of all, and then second, I'll do that. We'll go in order. For folks.
Well, that's a query, like, we got those because of the COVID and we're doing everything remote and to make sure everybody has access. Is that something that's needed going forward or not? I'm thinking of.
I think it is because if nothing else, you know, we're not like sprawling out plans here.
No, we have access to our devices.
No, you know what, I want to. Because the iPads were. The iPads were at the beginning of COVID, but all the all the electronic communication effectively during. Mayor Cryners, like it started, the electronic, the electronic distribution was actually the former, the former former mayor.
Two years back.
So it was intended to continue to do electronic starting then. So I want to kind of say we're kind of in this. In spirit.
All right, so let's 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 see where we're at with the. So I'm sorry.
So I'm sorry. Oh, thanks, but.
No, no, it's okay.
No, no, it's okay.
Okay, bills. Who moves the bills? You have a second on the bills?
Second, Giffen.
Giffen, all right.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Giffen?
Yes.
Mayor Carroll?
Yes.
Mrs. Engelhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Champion?
Yes.
Sebastian? Mr. Levitt?
Yes.
Ms. Wainsman?
Yes.
Mr. Samino?
Yes. Okay, so. Jay, do you have any professional report? No.
No.
Okay, so. I'm going to Beth first, so. Go ahead. We're going to, we were talking, there were some, there were some. One of the things that I mentioned last meeting was adoption of elements of our master plan and needing to. You know, to move forward and clarify what those things are. And I wanted to ask Beth if she could just summarize. Talk about some of the stuff there, not only for the benefit of the members of the board, but also there were there. To clarify, there were some questions that have been raised. About housing and some other stuff. And I was just hoping you could just kind of.
About the tennis master plan.
Yes, and all that stuff, yeah.
Yeah, sure, I'd be happy to. So very broadly, I think everybody knows, but I'll just start there. We have a couple, there's three elements that were just adopted. We've got goals and objectives, land use, economic development. Those are your current master plans. Elements, but we have other elements that have not yet been, that were not currently recently adopted, but still remain in place. So for example, we have, and just this goes back. Master plan history in the borough, I would say recent history starts in two thousand and ten, because we had our comprehensive master plan in two thousand and ten. We did our twenty fifteen reexamination report, and then we did our twenty twenty-two master plan. The two thousand fourteen answer. There was, there was a date, it was fourteen. Okay. And then we did our twenty twenty-two master plan, which included those three elements that I just referenced. So while we refer to our twenty-two, twenty twenty-two master plan as the master plan, the reality is. That if you're looking for all land use policy in the borough, you really need to go beyond just these three documents that were adopted. So for example. We have, we have some existing elements in our twenty-ten master plan, such as the. Circulation elements, the utility elements. Those items were reexamined in our twenty-fifteen reexamination report. And then were not readdressed specifically in twenty twenty-two. And so what that means is. If you're interested, let's take a more common topic. Let's talk about circulation for a moment. So if you're interested in circulation, the the truth of the matter is there are a couple of different documents that need to be verified. My recommendation that everything starts with twenty twenty-two is one of the things that we did was we tried to capture as much as possible. Within those elements so that we could have the biggest impact possible. So you'll see. Support for some of the circulation recommendations in the economic development side. You'll see support and tie-ins. With the land use element, and then you'll see, to a lesser degree, you'll see support. In the goals and objectives element. And so. I think that the proper place is to look at twenty twenty-two, see how that's addressed. Look to the twenty fifteen reexamination report, because that would provide an update. For what was stated in the twenty-ten comprehensive master plan, the last time we literally did the circulation element. So. It's a little confusing, but quite honestly, that's just the way it works here in New Jersey. This is not a Flemington specific problem. It's just the nature of small towns that may not have funding for a new comprehensive master plan every ten years or every so often. One of the exceptions to that sort of trajectory of general trajectory of twenty-ten, twenty-fifteen, and twenty twenty-two is actually sustainability. Because we have a separate sustainability element that was adopted in. Let's say twelve, I can check, but it starts on two thousand and twelve. And so that element remains. Similar to the circulation element, except that you won't find it in the twenty-ten. And we actually brought some of the golden objectives into the twenty-two master plan to the extent applicable. So that's our master plan as a whole. If you're interested in finding these documents, I actually didn't verify, I'm sorry, but I believe they're all posted online. We have the twenty twenty-two master plan, and that includes the entire body of land use policy adopted by this planning board. So includes these other documents I referenced as well.
We'll talk, there was some question about house.
Yeah, so. Housing element is one of the required elements in New Jersey. But oddly enough, it stands in almost every community, including Flemington, separate and apart from all of the other master plan elements. And that's because while it still has the same ten-year master plan requirement, because it's part of the. Elements address the municipal land use law. The reality is it is a fundamentally different animal than our circulation element, our land use element, et cetera. It is instead. Used as a very specific tool in order to maintain compliance with the state's affordable housing regulations. Those regulations are updated. Or addressed via case law at the state's own schedule. It's not, and so in. For municipalities, we can decide that we want to adopt a land use element. Whenever, whenever it suits us, based on the statutory requirements, to just have an examination of your master plan every two years. At ten years, sorry. In housing. We are. Heavily incentivized to adopt a housing plan whenever. The state indicates that's necessary, or whenever it is necessary in order for us to maintain protection and compliance with affordable housing regulations. I'm speaking a little vague because I'm trying not to get into the weeds of affordable housing, but in Flemington, what this specifically means is. Twenty fifteen, we had a Supreme Court decision that says, you need to work with the courts if you want to maintain compliance with your affordable housing. Flemington said, okay, we will. We worked with the courts that resulted in a housing element and fair share plan. So our housing element of the master plan that was adopted in. Twenty seventeen, that element under typical municipal land use law would be. Valid for ten years, so until twenty twenty-seven. But. State is. The state's affordable housing regulations essentially dictate that municipalities need to. Reexamine and update a new housing plan as part of a process that starts in twenty twenty-five. So I can't tell you that we're going to have a new housing element in twenty twenty-five, because that's actually a much bigger question based on. What happens at the courts, but in July twenty twenty-five, we're going to begin to engage this process. We likely adopted a new housing plan. Coincidentally, and just after our third round one, so maybe twenty twenty-seven or so. But that's that's a coincidence. There are a lot of municipalities that are just adopting housing plans in. Twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, and they too will be adopting a new housing plan in twenty twenty-seven. It's just Flemington got through the process early. And so it's going to work out that it happens to be about four months later. If that is clear.
It is.
Oh, I should, you said seven, I thought you said twenty twenty-five.
And then what I'm saying is, so our, the third round of affordable housing, our housing plan addresses the time period through July twenty twenty-five. So in July twenty twenty-five. Exactly what's what is going to happen is a big question in the state, but. In some, in some way, the fourth round will begin. There will be new numbers issued through a court process. They. I would be shocked if they're ready in July twenty twenty-five. There's just, I'll just say it on record, there's no way that's going to happen.
They pushed it a couple times the last.
So it will, they will be released at some point through a court process, maybe best case scenario, late July twenty twenty-five, maybe twenty twenty-six. At that point, we'll be able to plan for what should be included in our housing element and fair share plan, but there is literally no point. In adopting the plan before we have those numbers. And we're not going to be in trouble. We're not going to be non-compliant. We're not going to be subject to builder's remedy. Litigation as long as we engage in the process and say we will adopt a housing plan as soon as, as soon as the time is ready.
And if I could, just to clarify for folks who weren't as steep in this, that number that you're talking about is the determination of what Flemington boroughs. And fair share of the state's affordable housing needs also.
Yeah, every municipality has a number of fair share obligation according to however you want to determine. But that number, that obligation will be released at the, at the end of the third round and the beginning of the fourth round. And I do want to clarify, right now, we meet our our requirements, and we we were very. Diligent about making sure that we met our requirements unlike other municipalities. And we we made out much better than most because we were able to negotiate ahead of time with the, with the, we, we, and it got sent to the judge and, you know, we all, exactly. Yeah, it's a special master judge to negotiate that. Unlike other municipalities, kind of sat on their hands and they basically had to. Provide what they were dealt. So I think we were very responsible, what, you know, years ago about this. This process has played out that those towns that settled early and. They completed the process early, had a better deal. Those towns that are still struggling to find their way forward are having very different conversations with the court than. Municipalities like Flemington, and it's much harder. And there's some, there's some legitimate reasons for that, but it's also. You're, we were in part, municipalities like Flemington were rewarded for getting it done quickly and early in the process.
So I just wanted to appreciate that. So thank you, just to clarify. Then I'm trying to go to Kara for her professional report. There were a few things that came up. And she's going to talk about. One is questions about bylaws that came up. Another one was. Kind of anticipated earlier tonight about. Changes to, you know, changes to the land ordinances. Part of it, part of this is coming out of recommendations from the. Most recently adopted elements of our master plan. Some of it comes through stuff like receiving from this storm ordinance. Some of it's coming from a list that we've been keeping for a while, right? So 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 I wanted Karen to talk about all of those things if you could. And then we'll go back.
And I think the mindset is, it's, the time is right to start going through. Our ordinances and some of the changes that we've been contemplating. Some of them may have been included in the twenty twenty-two report, but not necessarily dictated by it, but something that we can look at. Other things came up with the master plan, other things with the flood hazard area ordinance, and just other things that we've been kind of thinking through throughout the years. In doing that, I also took a look at our rules on citizen input as well as bylaws, and I think that's also something that we should take a look at and. Put some clarity or answer some questions or even make changes if, you know, if you want to create subcommittees or if the board itself wants to talk about it as a whole. But again, doing all of these things at this time and making sure that they all dovetail properly with each other, I think is helpful. I've started putting a list together. Some of the things, you know, have to do with voting, nominations, public comment. Is for input with regard to public comment. Daniel's law was something that also came up, and we've done a little bit of research on some other municipalities, and we've. Started putting together something that could be helpful in that regard, that will give this board the information that it needs to properly evaluate. Comments from members of the public while still protecting, maybe people that are not. Subject to and protected by Daniel's law, but are concerned about putting their their addresses out there. Membership information. I picked up a couple typos. We happen to have a typo in our bylaws as to the actual number of alternates that the board has. We reference two, obviously, we have four. Some addition to the order of business that we have in there, again, these are really just typos. We won't need to throw our public comment in there, but those are the types of things that we're taking a look at. I think we need to take a deep dive into it and and see if anything requires change, or again, just clarification based on what we're looking to do and. Make sure that everything's consistent with each other.
Kara, can you explain the difference with how Daniel's law affects planning board versus the council? You know, because there is a distinct difference, and I want everybody to understand why we're concerned, why we're specifically concerned with that.
Yeah, so I mean, it usually is standard in any public body when somebody comes and wants to make a public comment that they give their name, their I just quote a record. When we're dealing with non-land use boards, there's. And I want to say in every situation, because there very well could be a topic that comes up for discussion where exactly where a person lives could be relevant. There's going to be street closures. There's going to be street closures, consider, considered, if there's going to be things of that nature. But specifically in a land use board, planning or zoning or joint. When somebody comes to comment on an application and provide this board with their thoughts. There are a couple of things the board has to consider. Number one, you're dealing with somebody who is a competitor, because that person gets a different type of treatment than someone who's actually coming. As a member of the, the borough that wants to make a valid concern known to the board. Whether or not that person is a resident of the town, and then following that, where they are in relation to the town, because this board is going to. Have the ability to consider someone who's a direct neighbor, a two hundred foot neighbor versus someone on the other side of the boundary lines of the municipality. How you're going to consider their comments and the weight that you're going to give those comments to your consideration of each application. May differ, I don't want to say it's going to, but you know, it very well may, and in making your decision and weighing the criteria that's required. To evaluate the relief that's requested and the impact, one of which is that there's no detrimental impact upon the residents, upon the master plan, upon your zoning ordinance. You're looking at the stated detriment that some residents may provide you with, and therefore where they are located becomes important. So that's, that's the distinction between the two, if that makes sense.
I'm, I just want to say, right. Full disclosure for the board, I was the one that raised queries on the bylaws, so thank you Cara for your time in answering this brewing. And Chair, if there is going to be a subcommittee, based on the fact, I don't like to complain unless I'm prepared to put the work into change things. I'd like to volunteer to be on that subcommittee if you'd like. Is that, is that becoming the situation you put?
It's actually where I'd like to go, so there, there are two, there are two, so there are two groups that I think they need to have. One is, quite honestly, a more limited direct task is to work with Cara on the bylaws and. Rules of citizen input, and Karen, thank you for stepping forward. I think maybe we need like one other person to work with her on that, if there's a volunteer for that. I don't know if anyone would like to, I know it's, it's mundane work, but it's kind of.
I think it's super useful for one of the newer members to do, because then they're learning from Cara about how things are spoken from, coming from the outside.
That, that's, that's fine, so, so, so Brian and, and Karen are going to work with Cara on, on that, and that's. And again, there's no timeline on that other than sooner than later, I mean, we, you know, we don't want to, we don't want to let it hang in the long term. No, not the next. I would, I would, I would like if we could, for there to be a draft of stuff in like a month. So that we could then circulate it around and then maybe adopt it at a, at a meeting after that in like in the next six, eight weeks. Again, I don't want this to linger while we're thinking of it, but it does need a little bit of thought, so. Maybe if we could put an item on the agenda for the twenty eighth of February as a kind of just a committee report, just as a whole, whether they're ready or not to.
My, my only comment to Karen, because I think you and I were researching something, it is a little fuzzy now because it was a couple of years back. When you look back at meetings and we were researching something that happened twenty five years ago, which predated all of us. When you read the minutes and it said, literally, I think it said something like. It was just a reference to first name, so and so commented on, thinking, okay, let go. I really, I, I looked at that and said, okay, you know what, a few years later, I don't really care, I don't know what that person was, was a councilman, I don't know if it. Like it literally was so sloppy to say, you know, so when you research.
Which property you were talking about.
But again, I think when you go back and you look at those pieces of what's been said at a meeting. I think it's so, it's, it is irrelevant to what this board thinks, meaning like when somebody sits there and says, hi, I'm here again. I read that a lot, I'm speaking again. Then, you know, you read a transcript, you're like, who is this, who is speaking, so I only, I only said that because it was really fantastic.
A legal hearing, and if, if, if an applicant has to appeal their, our decision. And, and for all the new members, when you go through your, when you go through your training, this is something that has stuck with me for a decade and a half. Because it's one of the things that is really focused on, in that. We're essentially doors, for lack of a better word, and if the, if, if, if there's an appeal, it moves up the ladder and that's how. It moves up the ladder, ladder, so it, it's really important that we understand that and, you know, moving forward.
And, and just to quickly add on that, when you're, when an action of this board is appealed to the superior court, since, since you don't have the appeal directly to the government body. This board is given the deference and the, the initial thought process of the court that the decision you made was right. Because they look to you as residents of the town, you have the best interest of the town in heart, so you're the best people to make decisions on application. However, that needs to be supported. You can't just say, oh, hey, we like it, we think this is great, let's approve it, there still needs to be that required, you know, statutory. Criteria that Beth goes through and, and Bob helps bring into the mix and Jay. That you need to use to make your decision.
And a lot of those court things are, read this, I mean, people, because it's, we're talking about here.
So, so that's, that's one group and, and I think we've got a good charge and we're going to work on those things, so thank you. I remember the, the, the first pass of this was what Todd, you and Mark gave. Few years ago, so it's worth an update. The second group is, is working on the, this ordinance question. And I, and I, and I agree, we, we should just start the work here. The, we have, we have goals, we have recommendations out of the twenty two master plan documents. We have long since wanted to update the checklist for applications and we need some examples on those. For things like, we don't necessarily need twenty five hard copies, it's an incredible expense for an applicant to have to do all that, we don't need it. We were, I think we, we whittled it down to maybe five or six. We're talking. So we, so we have ordinances, it's, it was checklist, it's goals and objectives, it's any updates that we want to make to, to. So, so one of the things that I had, I had a good conversation with the new chair of the HPC and Richard and I were talking, there was a couple of things from HPC. Where there were some recommendations on updating the map. That some minor adjustments to the map that happened a few, several years ago, that just never happened, so I'd like maybe if. If, if Dennis, as, as our HPC liaison, if Dennis, if you could be on this. This group as well, I'd appreciate having HPC voice there, and Todd has already volunteered to, to be on there, okay.
Maybe the fee schedule as well.
And the fee schedule is part of this, all of the ordinance things, and obviously it's working with our council liaisons, I wanted Susan to be, to be part of this, so. Four, so I'm not saying if it's, if it's Susan and Todd and Dennis and there is four, and I think that's a fine subcommittee and, and I. Chair is ex officio, I won't go to those meetings because I don't want to go along, so. We'll, we'll just keep that.
And for things like that, though, because I really do, I mean, there, not only are there, I think there are things from, I think, Mayor's side of our twenty ten master plan. That I think this board, and then again, I chaired it for many years, so I'm getting a lot of responsibility here. We never went back to the council and said, these are the ordinances that need to be changed.
So we're going to figure that, that's, we're doing it, we're doing it here.
What's the timeline on that?
So this one's going to take more time, let, let me be, let me be fair, this is going to be longer, and this is not, this is not something that. That's, and I don't want to do a piece bill, and I don't want, I don't want to do one and then another and then another, there's nothing here. I can't wait a couple of months for us to do this, right, so I would love for us to work with Beth. On, on this too, the suite of ordinance updates. And, and realistically, I think that if we could have the committee report back at the first meeting in March, which is, I think the. We, we moved around March a little bit, so I think the meetings in March are the eighteenth and the twenty fifth, if I'm remembering correctly.
Fourteenth and twenty eighth.
Fourteen, oh fourteen and twenty, I was thinking of April, sorry, so maybe we could say. March fourteenth, two, is that not a good, what are you looking at, making a face?
Well, I mean. It's only two weeks left, or you're saying that's a longer time.
All right, so maybe it's.
Like one more meeting and like two weeks later it's going to be like.
Let's push it back.
Are we recording or are we creating that?
No, 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 I want, I think it should be a report, a report back. I'd like, I'd like for the, I'd like for the subcommittee to meet and report back in, if today is. I would say the first meeting in March, report back where the work is and if there's any feedback you need from the board.
Means that we'll probably need once at that, by that point.
Need once at least and have some conversation, and then I would like to target more like April for when we could actually see a fresh round of, of stock. Just in terms of time, we, again, if you don't. Yeah, with Beth.
So definitely, when I was back, what I was coming to was, when we, the comments were made when. The rest of the board that weren't on the subcommittee for the master plan.
Yeah.
We commented that you'd had an eight, that, that they'd had eight months with it and we had one meeting, right with it, so that concern is, will we have. I know that we don't have a forum, but you report them so that we can say, oh, wait a minute, can I provide this in?
Yeah, so that's, so I'd like for the, I'd like for there to be a summary of the intended changes. High enough level for discussion, details enough for discussion, but high level that we're not down to actual like language of ordinance yet. Just so that, so that the board could have, and, and as the ability to provide some intermediate feedback, that, that's, you know, in a public meeting. And again, this is just as a, just a step in, so to get there.
And would we be able to discuss that in a committee?
Yeah, we're, we're talking, yeah.
You're not tardy.
Yep, yeah, and so, so that, so, so I would just say, so if we're going to do this, what did I say, the first meeting in April?
Yeah.
To have, to have a report back and then.
Oh, you said the meeting in March, and then April have like more substantive.
First meeting in March will report back and a more substantive one at the second meeting in April, let me put it that way, so we give the, give the committee a month to hear back from the. That way, and again, these are the, the both, both groups are working on this, the. The bylaws and working on the ordinance recommendations. The bylaws are ours to adopt, but the, the ordinance recommendations are going, have to go to council anyway, so. We will have, you know, and I, I'm, I'm kind of laying out rough timelines here, not knowing how long the work is going to take. And if we need to make an adjustment, we'll make an adjustment.
You're being, I'm, I'm speaking out loud, so just bear with me.
Please.
If, since we, since we go back and forth.
Yeah.
Anyway, between. Council and, and planning board with proposed ordinances. And we've got a planner there who will be able to explain whatever is sent from here to there. Should Marsha and I really be on either one of these committees, I'm just thinking, like, I'd rather see. I'd rather see like Brian and Todd and, and Dennis and one of the chairs be on the, the. Ordinance committee and kind of, that way there's two people that are new and two people that were part of the master plan and has that background and then. The other committee, you know, Karen and, and Trent or, or, or somebody else, I'm just, I'm thinking out loud, I don't necessarily know if. Marsha and I should be on these committees, I don't know.
I have policy for a municipality, so I feel, and I'm a legislative one, so I really feel like I should be on it.
I think it especially affects a member of any municipal.
No, not for planning board.
No, I, I'm just talking out loud, I don't, I didn't know if it's, if it, I, I want to make sure that we get as many.
You know, I, I, I want, especially on the ordinance stuff, I need to make sure HPC is at the table and that's where Dennis's role is going to be. I need, you know. Council liaison needs to be on there, because council can introduce the ordinance changes. And Todd, as somebody who was on the, the most recent subcommittee, I'm sure, so like you said, that's, that's not my pet is, no, no, I, I, you're, it's not a bad point, and I think that. We want to make sure that we have adequate breadth of representation.
Can I make a suggestion, since there is, can I make a suggestion, since there are four people on the committee, if one of the four of us can't make it. Maybe we tap somebody else to have a chance, I guess we want, I want other people to have the opportunity to sit in on these committees once in a while, so let's say. I don't know, I'm gone for a, you know, a business trip, and that way so, one, somebody else can sit in at that. You know, that happens to be a subcommittee meeting, that way there's. I just want other people to understand how the, get the opportunity to learn how the, how the take is made.
We can have alternates, but again, the, the, the problem is we're in a quorum, and so if they're copying anyone else, we got a problem, if they're at the meetings, we got a problem.
Well, maybe, maybe if we make it like this, if you're going to miss a subcommittee meeting, it's your responsibility to find, to give somebody else an opportunity to sit.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not as convinced.
See issues with discussions like.
Like I said, I'm talking out loud.
That's okay.
Thinking out loud.
No, it's okay.
Get a chance to, but more than we give before, that's a good.
Susan. Hi, hi, I don't mind, if I could sit in, I mean, I don't need to voice in, but, I mean, you guys saw me the last time when I walked, most of the time.
You'd be a fifth person, even if you were.
Okay, great, yeah, okay.
Establish five as a quorum on a nine person court, so we don't want to do that.
Right, okay.
I think he's offering to be the alternate, especially because she said, she was the third person on the master.
I honestly would rather have that committee than reschedule if they have to, if the person's going to miss. And I'd rather, it's just to keep the, the work product going. So, so we've kind of, that's where we're at, this is just work that needs, this is the work, and again, because we don't have a lot of development applications coming through. We have the bandwidth to do this now, and I, I want to take the moment to, 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 to move on these things.
I have one more question.
Yeah.
Let's say Hannah's. Hannah or Karen, who's expressed concern and valid concerns. Has a question. Can any, can any board member speak to another board member? To get, to give input or feedback between these meetings, if there's not a quorum. Are they allowed to discuss with the subcommittee, let's say Karen thinks of something after the fact and wants to talk to one of the subcommittees.
I certainly would want every member of the board, if they've got specific thoughts and ideas about the topics being addressed by these two working groups, to be able to communicate.
Yeah, I want people to feel free to, to.
That's our problem.
Yes, I think that's good.
We can send things, right, but they can't.
I would say it's a, a, send to you. Right, so me for the one and, and Beth for the other.
So, so let's, let's do it that way.
It's free to, I don't, I don't want people to feel like they're going to be dark.
We're on the care of it anyway.
I don't want people to feel like they're in the dark, I want people to feel like they can come to any subcommittee member and ask a question, even if it's just, hey, at your next subcommittee meeting. Could you address this issue, could you bring up this issue, like, you know, like, could you put that on the agenda to discuss with your fellow subcommittee meetings? It's, because we might not think, like, people in the subcommittee might not think of something, but somebody else will, and like, you know, hey, that's a good idea, I'll, I'll mention it when we have our next subcommittee.
So I want that to happen, but I also, again, we have these check-ins at our public meetings, it's also an opportunity for members who are not participating to weigh in as well, so. So if you've got ideas about bylaws, send them to Cara, if you've got ideas about, about ordinance updates, send them to Beth and we will, we will go from that. Good, all right, thank you. Do we have need to go to executive session? We do not, do I have a motion to adjourn?
We'll go there, Bruce.
Hang on, wait a second.
Give him a second.
All in favor? Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.